Good afternoon and welcome to our board Akron Public School Board meeting on March the 10th of 2025. Dr. Thompson, roll call please.
Mr. Alexander.
Present.
Ms. Autry.
Present.
Ms. Hall.
Present.
Reverend Harrison.
Present.
Ms. Jackson.
Present.
Dr. Molnar.
Present.
Mrs. Sykes.
Present.
Seven present, zero absent.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance member. Uh, Dr. Molnar, would you please lead us?
I love the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now have recognitions of the GOAT Award typically, uh, the super. Okay, Chief of Staff, Dr. Carter. The superintendent did make his part and he's coming from another meeting. He'll be here shortly.
Thank you, President Jackson. I want to congratulate the head custodian from Jennings CLC and the principal from Jennings Jennings CLC, Don Harper. We are excited to announce the next GOAT GOAT Award, the special recognition celebrating exceptional commitment to building cleanliness and operational excellence among our head custodians for the month of February. And so if Thomas Frederick and Don Harper, please come forward. Congratulations. This is yours for the, for the next month. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations and thank you. Next we'll have board member reflection, starting with our school board member, Taylor Blair from Ellet CLC.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, Mr. Superintendent, honorable board members and guests. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. I stand before you not just as a student, but as a representative of my peers, students who often feel unheard, unseen, and uncertain about their place in our schools. My name is Taylor Blair. I'm a senior at Ellet CLC. After graduation, I plan to further my education and commission as a naval officer. I'm involved in NJRTC and serve as the cadet commanding officer. I'm highly involved with my marketing pathway as a school store manager. I serve on the scholar board as well as a student council at Ellet CLC. But today I am here for something bigger than extracurriculars. I am here to speak on behalf of those who feel like their voices don't matter. I joined the scholar board because I believe our schools should not just prepare us academically, but also ensure we feel valued, respected, and safe. Our schools should be more than a place for students to achieve academic excellence. They should be a place of comfort where students feel confident in their voices and feel supported, valued, and motivated to succeed. While many students I've spoken with at Ellet CLC appreciate the sense of community created by teachers, staff, families, and friends, others struggle with issues that affect their ability to thrive. As a first year member of the scholar board, I believe it is my responsibility to bring these concerns forward and advocate for meaningful change. Ellet CLC has created an environment where many students feel supported. Some of my peers have shared that their parents motivate them every single day and provide them with the biggest source of motivation. Others have expressed their gratitude for teachers and friends who give them a reason to come to school each day. Many students appreciate the freedom to express themselves in certain clubs, sports, events, and other extracurricular activities. A student in my senior class emphasized the importance of our safety and security relating to how the security guards never fail to protect the halls we walk in every single day while also pushing the students to succeed, but always ensuring a safe environment to learn and to be a part of. These are the aspects of our school that students cherish. However, when talking with my peers, not all students feel the sense of belonging. Many have voiced concerns that needed to be addressed. I was informed that students feel like their voices are ignored when they bring up issues that deeply affect them. Some students feel as though their sports team funding is not distributed fairly. Seniors are struggling to pay their dues because of financial burdens on families who are already struggling. These kinds of issues create obstacles for students who are simply just trying to succeed. Imagine waking up every single morning dreading going to school, not because of tests or book assignments, but because you feel invisible. That is the reality for too many students today. Bullying remains a very significant issue to address. Bullying is affecting attendance, mental health, and overall student success. The numbers reflect this reality. Attendance is declining, engagement is decreasing, and students are starting to feel powerless. They speak up, yet many feel that nothing changes. In my four years as a student at Ellet, I know many students who have personally been impacted by bullying. Schools must be a place where students feel free and supported, not isolated and ignored. We truly have to believe in the power of education so we can believe in the power of student voices. It is time for real change, and I urge the board to take action in the following ways. Strengthen anti-bullying policies. When any student or staff reports bullying, something must be done. Students need to see real consequences for those responsible for bullying. Our schools must take a stronger approach to hold students accountable and protect those who are affected. Creating a student advisory council. Students deserve a seat at the table where they can help make decisions about their education and well-being. Those who experience these challenges firsthand should be included in the decision-making and discussions on how to address them. Make attendance about belonging. Rather than punishing students for missing school by taking away their prom, field trips, and academy celebrations, we need to focus on addressing the root causes of the absences. If students feel safe, supported, and valued, they will be more likely to attend school every single day. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. once said, "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about the things that matter." Today, I refuse to be silent. This is not just a speech, it is a call to action. The question is, will we continue to acknowledge these issues without making real changes? Or will we finally find the necessary steps to make schools a place where every student feels like they belong? The future generations depend on these decisions that we make today. I urge you to listen, not just with open ears, but with open hearts and a willingness to act. Thank you for your time, your attention, and hopefully your commitment to change.
Taylor, I want to thank you for that. I think it was very well said, excellent, and I love every point that you made, and I'm in agreement with that. And especially the, when you talk about student advisory committee to really, so students are at the table with things that impact them. I find that very important. I've mentioned that before, and I would love to talk to you because I think, um, when I mentioned it amongst my colleagues, the, I need to unpack really what that looks like was necessary, and so I would like to lean further in that with you at some time to talk about that because I think that's a great idea. And also, um, I would like to say the charge for the bullying, I think also, uh, last board meeting, we talked about how we have policies in place, but what good is a policy if the policy is not enforced? And at that time, we were talking about cell phones, um, because according to our policy, bullying is a level three offense. Uh, I think it's a level, you know, it has levels, which is at a level three requires that an action is taken, suspension. And so, um, I'm glad that you said it in this forum, how excellent you are and what a great representative you are. And I'm, I'm also grateful to hear that you're thinking about our armed services. I was in Navy ROTC. It had a great experience when I was at Garfield. Commander Williams was our, um, over our program at the time. But I'm just so thankful when the students come in your voice that you're really advocating as you're supposed to, that you are being the voice of change for your peers and challenging the, the decision makers to make decisions that can, um, benefit you also. Again, thank you, and I appreciate your comments. Um, they were heard and they were felt. Um, any other board member comments for Taylor? Yes, Member Hall?
Thank you, Madam President. Taylor, you did a very, very good job. You spoke with so much confidence. And I know it's hard sometimes to speak up because, you know, a lot of the adults, you know, the kids think adults don't listen. I hear it every day from my 11-year-old. You don't listen. Um, but thank you for that. Um, one point that you touched on, and I've always felt some kind of way about far as attendance, right? We don't know what's going on in our children's lives. You know, some kids are taking care of themselves, trying to get up and get their siblings up and take them to school. I know when I was a senior, my mom, um, woke up one morning and just couldn't walk anymore. And I had four siblings and I had to take my siblings to school, but the staff didn't want to hear. They wanted to say, well, if you, or if you're late, you're getting a detention, you know, and so we had to, you know, follow up and all of that stuff. And also, one thing that we're going to be talking about today is attendance, right? And when I was reviewing some of the policy, um, it stated that, you know, inappropriate, um, habitual attendance, um, absence, you know, the principal can contact the juvenile court. And it's, and I put in my notes, I said, well, what are we doing before we contact juvenile court? Are we reaching out to the parent? Are we going to the house to find out what's going on? Are we talking to the kids to see really what's going on? And why are you late? Or why are you missing school? And maybe there's ways that we can help, right? Um, so thank you for that, for just being open-minded and coming here and just talking to us and let us know how you feel. Thank you. Good luck to you on your future.
Any other board member comments for, yes, uh, Ms. Alexander?
Yes, I want to thank you for coming as well. Um, you were very stern in what you were saying, so I knew you had to be in the military, which was good. And I see that guy out there has, uh, has been working with you guys for a number of years. And I want to thank you for coming and expressing all the things you've, you've expressed to us, and we will look up, look out, look at those things and see what we can do to help because students are the only reason that we here, and we care about you guys, so we have to make sure we do that. So continue to do the work that you do and, uh, support your fellow, uh, students at the school, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Member Autry.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, Ms. Blair, thanks again for your confidence, for your leadership. I really appreciate that. Um, and I just want to say as a member of the policy committee, um, Mr. Alexander is the chair, I'm the co-chair. But we'll definitely look at that and maybe we'll have an opportunity to speak together to kind of look at it with some of those students and peers that might feel unheard. We could actually look at the policy and see where students are feeling like it's failing them. So I just wanted to share that with you and thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments? Okay, yeah, let's give her a hand clap. That's worthy of that, yes. All right, Taylor, thank you so much again. We appreciate you and your comments. Next, we have, are there any, uh, board member reflections, any board member, community reflections? Member Hall?
I'll just say, uh, real quick, thank you, Madam President. Um, and I won't rain on your parade because I know it's important to you too. Um, Saturday, we had the first ever middle school cheerleading competition that was held at, um, Higher CLC. What an amazing time. These young sixth, seventh, and eighth graders just got out there and showcased their talent, and they were so proud. The only thing I would have loved to seen was the high school cheerleaders come and support the young kids. Um, but other than that, they won spirit sticks, they had dance off, they cheered. I mean, I sat there like, oh God, I want to get up and cheer too. So just shout out to, um, Lexi, Diana's daughter, and also she's a coach at East High School and Janelle Weems, who's a coach at Bookto. She was one of my classmates where we cheered together at Bookto. So just great, 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 um, event. Um, just showcasing our children is my big thing and just letting them know that we care about them. So thank you.
Thank you, Member Hall. Are there any board member community reflections? Member Harrison?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to let the community know, I think we, um, since we met last, we probably got, uh, 20 emails, I would assume, 20 emails. I try to answer all of the emails that come in with at least a, something to say. I receive the emails, but it's, it's not possible to answer all of them. But wanted to acknowledge that we do get the emails, we do read the emails. We do appreciate people who come down. We do take it into consideration. We do listen to our students who speak so passionately about this that they are passionate about. So just wanted to kind of acknowledge that, you know, we do receive emails and we are trying to answer them. We are listening. So thank you who comes out. I was one who came down frequently and don't always feel like I was heard, but we do hear you. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Harrison. Uh, Member Autry.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I just wanted to share that since we last met, um, I did have the opportunity to attend one of our cornerstone meetings on academic achievement. Um, I was the only one there. And so I was disappointed in that, but I just wanted to thank that team for their work in putting the presentation together. Um, they're doing a great job moving us along, um, in that area, and hopefully we can explore, um, how to have that better received. And I don't know if we have to go to where people are at, but it just doesn't make a whole lot of sense to do all of that work and planning. And then Board Member Autry is the only one who shows up because it's open to the community, to parents. And so I just wanted to share that and thank, uh, the individuals who put all of that together. Um, also on March 1st, I attended Bookto PTA's annual Black History Program and Taste of Culture. Um, the Bookto Jazz Band and Middle School Choir performed. There were a lot of community, uh, individuals, poets, vendors, a wonderful event. Um, and they raised money for scholarships. Um, also on March the 6th, I visited KCLC for Read Across America and was able to read to Mrs. Peach's fourth grade class and Mrs. Collins' fifth grade class, amazing scholars. Uh, the, again, their big issue is school lunch. Um, I know we have smoothies now. I saw a post going around about smoothies. They said they didn't come to Case CLC, so they want to know how they can get the smoothies at Case, but they were a wonderful group of kids. Um, and then Member Hall already mentioned for the love of cheer. Um, it was a, a great program. It was nice to, to see, uh, the diverse, can I say that word? Diverse crowd come out and come together and just have a nice, uh, Saturday afternoon. Um, it was a really nice event. And then, uh, lastly, I just wanted to share that I took some time since we last met to go meet with some students at, uh, Bookto CLC and at Firestone CLC, just to get their perspective on what's been going on with all of the DEI stuff. And so they had a lot of comments, but I heard a lot of them just concerned about what can happen and what can't happen. And unfortunately, I just didn't have a lot of answers, but I just went there to actually listen. Uh, but they showed a lot of courage and leadership. They were concerned about their siblings. Many of them were upperclassmen, but they were concerned about their siblings coming behind them. Um, many of those, some of them, uh, with disabilities. And so they shared that they would indeed like us to have a policy on the books. Um, they weren't too sure that we would do the work without a policy because they said, Ms. Autry, uh, board member change, and so did superintendent. So they wanted me to know that. And so I just wanted to share that information. It was a lot more shared as well, but my time is up. But thank you.
Thank you so much for that. Um, Member Autry, Member Molnar?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, my community reflection is going to start with, I went to a PTA event last week, a Cookies and Canvas. My gnome painting did not, uh, turn out quite as good as everybody else's, um, but I tried my hardest and they told me that that's what matters, is that I tried my hardest. So I really appreciate that encouragement. Um, but I did, in talking to, a lot of the films was very well attended. Um, the whole cafeteria was full. Um, and talking to family members, there are some people that were, uh, kind of disappointed about the way that we have been portraying ourselves as a district in some of our press releases and things. And I thought, I don't know, I don't know what that is. So I went and read it, and I, I did read one sentence. Um, I'm going to read, it says, "Residual effects remain among the scattered debris of uncertainty. The issues are undeniable. Unresolved union contracts, a divided school board, and the superintendent's challenging relationship with local media." And I just, I, I understand why a lot of the, uh, community members were saying something because that's a salacious description that I just wouldn't expect to have come from within. And so I tried really hard to tell people that we, as a board, we have had so many committee meetings, especially lately. We've had, you know, usually committee meetings are once a month. We've had once a week for the equity committee. Um, so three meetings in three weeks where we are actively and collaboratively coming together to support our students, our staff, our community, um, divided board. I, I really want to emphasize our successful productivity. We had full board attendance. Um, our administrators were there. We had community participation as we are co-creating this policy and we're continuing to co-create this policy together. We're all working towards a common mission that's supporting our students, supporting our community. And we're listening and responding and pausing as needed to make good decisions, good lasting, strong policy. And so, um, I really want to say, I know, um, our, our goals are, you know, proactive coverages of key messages. And I really want like positive media mentions, reinforce excellence, uh, highlight district successes. And I think what we're doing as a committee should be highlighted as a district success. So I really wanted to talk about that. Um, and then, uh, Member Harrison just commented about the emails. We do get and read emails. I have an apology to give. I have not been reading my spam emails. And I just found out today, I had 560 messages that had gone into my spam. Um, and so, uh, there was a parent that came up and she said she tried to email me and I did, I found that message in my spam. Um, there were messages from other board members, messages from attorneys, uh, messages from a principal who wanted a building visit. And so I'm sorry, I have not responded to any of these messages. I'm reading them now. I'm trying to, uh, react to them now. So my call to action when it comes to these spam emails is to let people know. If you are emailing board or board members and you don't want your email to go to spam, I highly recommend in your subject line, because there, I'm guessing there's a lot of ELP people here. I did have some ELP messages in my spam. In your subject line, put something specific in there, uh, maybe the name of a building or something like that that shows that it was not a robot, and that might make it less likely to go to spam. And I will try to continue to monitor my spam. Um, and if I see any other hints that might, uh, get things back to our inbox. But I, um, apologize and we'll do better, and hopefully we will get all of our messages. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Dr. Molnar. I'm gonna check my spam. I used to get a lot of emails and I, I, yes. Am I, so if you've emailed me and you think I selectively respond to emails because you hear me addressing certain things and not others, I did not get your email. I'm gonna follow my colleague, I'm gonna look at my spam because I do try to respond and deal with issues that are brought to me. So, yeah, Dr. Molnar, I'm glad you said it on, on the floor, so I can say same for me. I'm gonna, but I haven't checked mine. Dr. Molnar has begun checking hers. I haven't checked mine yet, but I will after this meeting. So thank you, Dr. Molnar, for that. Are there any board member, uh, community reflections? All right, seeing none, we'll, um, entertain our community reflections after I read this preamble. Participants will not be permitted to speak on matters related to vendors, business matters, formal complaints, grievances, specific student or student records, personnel matters, and potential or pending legal matters. Participants must speak on matters related to the business of the board. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less. The board will not respond, but will assign through the superintendent the appropriate person for follow-up. Please state your name and group affiliation upon coming, um, to the mic. The first person we have, um, to address the board is Kelly Lutz.
Good evening, board members. My name is Kelly Lutz. I'm an early childhood educator, teaching in a full-day ELP classroom at Helen Arnold CLC. I come before you tonight out of deep concern for. I come before you tonight out of deep concern for students, my colleagues, and the integrity of the district's early learning program. Let me be clear, I fully support the benefits of our youngest children having access to a rich and diverse, full-day, early learning education. When properly planned and resourced, the impact of such a program is immeasurable for these children and their families. Unfortunately, that is not the reality in Akron. We are facing a complete and unsafe lack of staffing. Because of this, we continue to see children spending far too long in soiled diapers. Many of these children are changed, standing in a bathroom, in a classroom, or laying on an unsanitary bathroom floor without adequate changing tables. Paraprofessionals or substitute teachers are being pulled from special education units to diaper children in ELP classrooms, leaving those units unsafely short-staffed. We are expecting classrooms full of four-year-olds to stay quietly on napping mats for up to 90 minutes, often with only one adult supervising. I ask you, how many of you have seen a four-year-old sit quietly for 90 minutes? My colleagues and I regularly go without lunch and planning time because we refuse to turn a blind eye to these unsafe conditions. We are exhausted. And yet, every time we raise these concerns, we are met with empty promises from this administration, words meant to pacify rather than create real change. Many of us are not just frustrated, we are at the point of mental and physical exhaustion. Have any of you ever arrived at work feeling that way? Do you believe it is possible to be productive, passionate, and excited about your job when you feel like that? Is this acceptable to you? We are here tonight because we cannot keep working under these conditions. This is not sustainable. And I don't believe this is what you want for Akron Public Schools. It certainly isn't what I want. Please, don't turn away from this. Show us your leadership by talking to our leadership so we can find real solutions because our children, our educators, and our families deserve better. Thank you.
I have a thought I would like to say, but I'm going to move through these speakers. The next speaker we have is Brooke Gray. Ms. Lutz, again, thank you for your comments.
Hi. Good evening. I'm Brooke Gray. I am an early intervention specialist at Essex. Oh, yeah, gosh, sorry. I'm an early intervention specialist in the ALP, and I come to you tonight as an advocate for our youngest learners and also someone who has dedicated my career to ensuring that our preschool students receive the strong foundation they deserve. One of my favorite parts of being in the ALP is that I get to be one of the first experiences with children and their families in our school district and the school program, and we really hope to make a really great, positive first impression. Hopefully, they end up like Taylor, who is here, and stays with us for a long time. Over the last year, however, I've watched what was once an outstanding and respected preschool program spiral into the exact opposite. The expansion of our early learning program, the increase in our classrooms, the extension of the school day, it could have been a step forward for our children, but instead of a well-planned and well-supported rollout, this administration has rushed these changes with little to no foresight, ignoring the very real concerns of the educators and our representatives who work with these classrooms every day. We are really lucky to have a new supervisor with us this year who works really hard in supporting us and our children and our families, but there is only so much she can do as well. Early education teachers and AEA fully support expanding access to high-quality preschool for all children. We believe in the power of early learning and the life-changing impact it has on our students and their families. We cannot support is the expansion that's so poorly executed that it threatens the quality of education that we're trying to provide and the safety and well-being of our students. My colleagues and our representatives, when trying to point out real concerns for the safety of these children, have been ignored. Instead of addressing these issues, the administration has chosen to push out a narrative that everything is working in an outstanding way, but it isn't. None of my colleagues speaking here want to be in this position. We should not have to go to these lengths to call attention to the concerns that directly affect the well-being of our students, but we have tried to work within the system. We've asked the administration to work towards real solutions and partnerships with our leadership. We've gone above and beyond to make this work. The administration continues to tell you that everything is just fine and that they're working out the changes and everything will be great, but it's not fine and it's not great right now. We believe that it's the board's responsibility to answer to your employees, to answer to the families of our students, and to explain why this administration continues to treat us with disrespect. Why is this administration so completely opposed to collaboration when anyone raises concerns? Our preschool students deserve better, our educators deserve better, and this community deserves a school district that values truth and transparency. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. Next, we have Holly Kulik.
Good evening. My name is Holly Kulik, and I am a full-day early learning program educator at Essex. I have been a preschool teacher for 18 years and have been at Essex ELP for the last 10 of those years. I want to share some thoughts tonight regarding the many changes, both implemented and proposed, affecting our program. Like my colleagues, I am deeply concerned that you may not fully grasp the lack of collaboration, support, and resources we are experiencing as we work to serve our youngest scholars and their families in the best way possible. While others tonight have provided specific details, I want to take a step back and offer a broader perspective on what I am witnessing in the district. The superintendent repeatedly states that change is hard and that we must simply trust his decisions. I agree that change is difficult, but not in the way that he suggests. The real difficulty lies in the fact that those leading these changes, many of whom have not been with Akron Public Schools long enough to understand its history and community, seem to struggle with the change the most. If they had truly been a part of this district, if they had lived in this community and understood the commitment our educators have played in building our early learning program, they would have recognized that the contention and friction we see today are not inevitable. They are the direct result of choices made by leadership. Districts around us are prioritizing early learning and building expansive programs and hubs for their youngest learners. Akron Public Schools is doing the exact opposite. Coming into a unique district like Akron and immediately refusing to collaborate with stakeholders, dictating ill-conceived changes with no input from those expected to implement them, or retaliating against dedicated employees simply for asking questions is either productive or visionary. This approach does not build a stronger school system. It dismantles the amazing ELP program that has always been. Dismissing everything that is not my idea is not leadership. It is narrow-minded and shortsighted. Over time, this kind of thinking leads to senior, experienced, and professional educators walking away, disengaging, and giving up. If the goal of retaliatory leadership is to silence those with different ideas, to demand blind loyalty at the expense of collaboration, and to shut down dissent, then I worry that that's where we're at now. I urge this board to address these concerns before things get worse and our ELP staff leave this district. Talk to our leadership, talk to us, seek out real input, and apply it meaningfully. Do not dismiss your professional educator so readily. We are the ones on the front lines, and we are exhausted. Please listen to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kulik. Did I say your name properly? Okay, thank you. Next, we have Jamie Sadowski.
Good evening, Board Members. My name is Jamie Sadowski, and I have been working in the early learning program at KCLC for 10 years. What has happened to our once outstanding early learning program should be a concern for all of you. The situation has become so alarming that many of my fellow educators and I have seriously considered leaving the program. I found out my classroom at KCLC was being closed while watching the last board meeting. I was not informed in advance and learned about this major change, like many others, through a public meeting. The lack of respect and transparency is unacceptable. No one is communicating with us, no one is communicating with our leadership. Instead of thoughtful planning, we're given last-minute directives and told to just make it work. So what happens when we are left without the support we need? We have medically fragile students placed in classrooms with students with severe behavioral challenges, and as a result, many of these students are not receiving the support that they need. We have over-enrolled classrooms where far too often, one adult is left to supervise. Our staff and students are more than just numbers on a spreadsheet. They are individuals with needs, and we deserve to be treated as such. How is this sustainable? It is not. Yet this administration continues to spin this reality, making it appear as though everything is fine. It is not fine. It is not business as usual, and it's not acceptable. Stop pretending, stop placing the burden on an overworked, under-supported staff. This administration must take responsibility for the misguided decision to expand our early learning program without adequate collaboration, planning, proper resources, or the ability to deliver on promises being made. It's time to make this right. Please do not ignore us. We will continue to speak out in support of our students and their families. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sadowski. And I apologize that someone actually came to me this weekend about you as I was eating my food, that you're the teacher. You were watching a board, you were watching a meeting, that's when you found out. And that's, I apologize for that because I didn't know what to say as I was trying to eat my salad. You know, you want to have words, but it's no excuse for that, so I want you to hear from me that that's not acceptable, to hear about anything that's dealing with your career in such a way and not formalized. And that's, I'm speaking on behalf of me because I cannot speak on behalf of the board without convening, but thank you. Carrie Hollingworth.
Good evening, Board Members. My name is Carrie Hollingsworth, and I am an early learning educator at Harris Jackson and Helen Arnold CLC. Like my colleagues here tonight, I am beyond frustrated and deeply concerned about what I am witnessing in our early learning program. There is a complete and unsafe lack of staffing in our classrooms. Because of this, educators are working from morning until dismissal without a lunch, without a planning period, and in many cases, beyond our contracted hours. We are arriving early when vans drop off students, and we are staying late when parents fail to pick up their children on time. And in many cases, we are left alone in classrooms with no one, no way of even taking a bathroom break. In addition, two of my students that are typical peers wet their pants last week because there was nobody to take them to the bathroom. I was alone in the classroom and there was no other staff. And yet, as educators, we always do. We step in to fill the gaps silently, without recognition, and without support. We do it because we care about our students. Let me be clear, this is unfair, this is unsustainable, and this is unacceptable. The board should be embarrassed by the way the early learning program educators are being treated. You have heard these concerns before, you know these conditions are not okay, and yet the administration continues to ignore our voices and refuses to work with our leadership to find solutions. I ask you to stop expecting us to keep plugging the holes in a broken system while this administration refuses to do their part. Stop turning a blind eye. I am respectfully asking for authentic action and not empty words. If we do not fix this now, we will continue to lose outstanding, dedicated educators, and that loss will ultimately hurt the very children we are here to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hollingsworth. Next, we have Holly Jordan.
My name is Holly Jordan. I am here as a parent tonight for the early learning program at Case and Essex. My son, who is no longer in the early program, was able to and benefit from both locations of the ELP, and I can confidently say that this program was life-changing for our family. Before going to the ELP, we were lost. We bounced around from daycare to daycare, private preschool to private preschool, trying to find a place to support my son. He has autism, and none of the places we were able to find had resources, staff, or training to meet his needs. Instead of thriving, he was struggling. Instead of learning, he was left behind. Then we found the ELP at Case and Essex. For the first time, my son had teachers who did not see his challenges, they saw his potential. They didn't fit him into a system that wasn't built for him. They built a system around him. They adapted, they adjusted. When something didn't work, they found a way. He had support from highly-trained teachers, from paraprofessionals, support staff, aides who were instrumental into his daily success. These staff members weren't just extra hands in the classroom, they were the bridge between my son and his learning. They helped him navigate transitions, regulate emotions, and feel safe in his environment. Because of ELP, my son made incredible progress. By the time he was ready for kindergarten, he had an IEP carefully designed and to support his continued growth. And then we started kindergarten and saw the cracks in the system. His IEP called for one-on-one support person, a relationship builder who could help him transition into a general education program. Instead of providing that support, the district removed that from his IEP. The paraprofessionals and support staff who had been critical to his success were no longer there. Without the accommodations, his disability was no longer treated as a challenge to support, it was treated as a behavior problem. Instead of being set up for success, he was placed in an environment that didn't have the resources to help him thrive. And now, in front of you, we are facing a decision to remove the very support staff that made a kid-like mind thrive. The closure of the ELP classrooms at Case and Essex will take away our preschool classrooms and not just because, not because there isn't a demand, but because the decision was made without the input of the educators and the families who depend on those locations. Families who have already enrolled their children are now left scrambling, unsure of options. Teachers and paraprofessionals, support staff who have spent years building these programs are being overlooked in the decision-making process. If we believe that early childhood education, we need to invest in it in words, in not just words, but in actions, then that means ensuring that special education students receive special accommodations they are entitled to and not quietly stripping them away. That means hiring and retaining more paraprofessionals. Thank you.
Thank you. One second, Representative Harrison.
I want to make a motion that we would suspend the rules so that we can let the people who have signed up, all the people who have signed up, have opportunity to speak. So I will put that in the form of a motion.
Okay. The motion is on the floor. I think in our policy, because that's what Alexander was telling me, I could have just suspended the rules as the president, but it's been moved by Member Harrison, properly second by Member Hall. Any discussion?
Yes.
Dr. Molnar.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Reverend Harrison.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Reverend Curtis Walker. Next, we'll have Reverend Curtis Walker.
To Madam President, to the superintendent, to the members of the board, to those who have come to share. My name is Reverend Dr. Curtis T. Walker, Sr. Come as a grandparent of a student at Case CLC, Kalen E. Walker. I come to lift up three points really quickly. First, to thank the board for pausing and considering through the Equity Committee the diversity, equity, and inclusion policy of the Akron School Board. Thank you for your courage, thank you for your insight, thank you for taking time to make sure we get it right so that we can serve and continue to serve our very diverse community to be able to meet the various needs that are before us. The second point I wanted to lift up and encourage us to continue to fight for is the fair funding activity that is taking place at our State House right now. Akron was in the forefront in the Culp-Patterson Funding Project via the previous treasurer. We need to be in the forefront to make sure that we are adequately funded to do what many of these teachers, many of these parents are talking about tonight. So we encourage you to fight and be assertive in making sure that we are at the table and receive the funds that are necessary. The third is to lift up early learning program. Early ELC rocks, and as early learning is a part of our formula for success, we need to make sure that we have the adequate needs for those students so that they can succeed. You've heard some of the concerns of parents tonight. I want to encourage us on the positive. We looked at, in the past, early childhood education, all-day kindergarten. We need to not decrease, but increase. Find the necessary funding, find the necessary tools to be able to adequately meet the needs of our students, staff, and teachers so that we can be in the forefront of making sure that we adequately teach our students at the earliest point of their introduction to Akron Public Schools. I am APS proud, and because of that, I encourage us to be proud and do our best to meet the needs of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Walker. Next, we have Megan Moreland.
Hi, good evening. I'm Megan Moreland. Thank you for the opportunity to express our concerns for the proposed closing of the early learning program at Case and Essex. This issue is important to me as a mom of a student who has attended both Case and Essex, a PTA president, and a partner looking for APS to thrive. I wholeheartedly agree with the expansion of ELP enacted in the 24-25 school year, which provides our children a head start to develop kindergarten readiness. I met Dr. Robinson's leadership on the issue with glee. He stated last September that, quote, "Our new all-day pre-K program is designed to give our youngest scholars the best start possible. By investing in early education, we give our children the tools they need to succeed in school and beyond." Despite this expressed need, the administration announced recently that ELP classrooms at Case and Essex will close this coming school year. The Firestone Cluster currently serves eight pre-K classrooms. Rumors of final changes abound, but according to APS Chief of Staff, the proposed changes would shift two classrooms to King with Portage Path would remain in place. For a decade, the Firestone Cluster provided our community with seven ELP classrooms and currently serves eight. These proposed changes would cut our classrooms by half and potentially eliminate 140 slots district-wide, and not because of lack of interest or demand. In September of last year, APS reported that, quote, "The community's reception for the new all-day offering was spirited with families signing up quickly to fill all available opportunities." Mike Quincy is a pandemic baby, and upon his entry to pre-K, he suffered from separation anxiety. Having the opportunity to attend Case's half-day class at 3:00 and Essex's full-day class at 4:00 allowed him to build independence and self-assurance. These offerings were imperative to his success moving forward, as were the teachers who went above and beyond to help my son adjust to these new environments. I would hate to see my neighbor's children not have the same safe place to grow. My time to speak is closing, but I have rapid-fire points to consider. First, investments were made to develop Essex as a hub for teachers and bolsters the program as a whole. It should remain. Second, the current top-down decision methodology is not working. Communications have been lackluster with diminishes morale and creates avoidable outrage as you are hearing now. Thirdly, teachers need resources to succeed. Give them changing tables, sufficient aid support to allow for planning and lunch periods. Four, it would behoove our district to increase compensation, especially for paraprofessionals who currently make less than a living wage. Lastly, reduction of classrooms with similar demand will undoubtedly increase class size, strain student-teacher ratios, and diminish our staff's ability to teach effectively. In conclusion, I ask you to believe in ELP as we do and bolster the programming, not by slashing seats, but rather by building upon cornerstone that have been set up for the success of the program and children. Thank you for your time and your service to the community.
Thank you very much, Ms. Moreland. Next, we will have Maria Kraus.
Good evening, board members. Excuse me. My name is Maria Kraus and I'm a school psychologist in APS. I have worked in that position in the district for 33 years, the last 17 of the early learning program. I am also the parent of a graduate of ELP. I'm here to support my colleagues, the students, and the families I am honored and proud to serve. The preschool program has been around, has been around in APS since 1986, although at that time, it was known as the Integrated Preschool Program. It gradually grew into the program that we had in 2023-24 school year that was rated gold and five stars by the state. Many of our teachers have their master's degrees. Our preschool not only has very qualified teachers and classroom assistants, but also the services of speech and language pathologists, OTs, PTs, teachers of the visually impaired, teachers of the hearing impaired, and yes, school psychs. I think we can say that the ELP teachers and staff know what they're talking about. As a school psychologist and educator and parent, I cannot stress enough that a child's early education lays the foundation for success in school and beyond. Majority of brain growth happens in the first five years of life. When millions of neural connections are being made, early learning provides critical social, emotional, and academic benefits, preparing students to be lifelong learners. We sort of lack the tools necessary to maintain a high standard in Akron's early learning program, that Akron's early learning program was once known for. Lack of appropriate staffing and resources, poor planning, and poor implementation have negatively impacted the early childhood learning. For example, young children need to have gross motor activity daily to be able to focus during instructional access, developmentally appropriate design materials. Currently, there is no, little to no gross motor time, limited gym and playground access, developmentally inappropriately and inappropriately designed and unsafe playgrounds, and reducing rather than increasing instructional time, all raise justifiable concerns about what we are really trying to accomplish. Are we truly committed to providing a developmentally appropriate education to the youngest of our learners? Changes in ELP should have been paired with collaboration and planning and increased support. Among the foundational values of the Blueprint for Excellent Strategic Plan are communication, relevance, relationships, trust, and readiness. I would venture to say that these were not met when making changes in ELP. The very knowledgeable ELP staff was not consulted prior to all these changes being made. When those of us who have dedicated years in early childhood education say that something is not working, we expect to be heard. We care too much about these students and the families to remain silent. We need the board to acknowledge the reality we are facing and demand real solutions. We need leadership from you that prioritizes the quality of early education over the quantity of classrooms and the untruthful picture that they are painting and showing the public. Please work with us, work with our ELP leadership. Our youngest students, our families, and the educators who we serve deserve nothing less. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kraus. Next, we have Apostolate.
Good evening, everybody. I heard some things back here before I go to what I'm going to say to you. I'm very concerned. It's raining, it's pouring, the old man and woman are snoring. They bumped their head and gone to bed and it's time to wake up in the morning. Where's the rainy day fund money for the school system? And I'm really saddened that teachers are not having lunch. I come to you this evening, I'm Apostolate. I'm the pastor and visionary of, one of my churches is called No Fear But God Fellowship Assembly Church Ministries, and I'm the founder and visionary of Mother's Lives Matter, Moms Lives Matter. I wrote you a letter, and I believe the more you read, the more you succeed, and I'm going to just stick to the reading, so, and then I make copies for each of you. Dear board members and other concerned parties, some of my concerns are as follows. Please put prayer in the name of Jesus Christ back into our school system, including the curriculum. Prayer, pens, paper, and promising futures have been removed. Pistols, metal detectors, tasers, and prison population, mass incarceration, replace them. Students and parents fear for their safety with this obstacle they face every day. Jesus Christ represents both Lamb and U, EWE, male and female, the X and Y chromosomes. One person, remove prayer. I am the one person who is willing and able to help us restore and revive the life academic arena. Where there is prayer, there is power. Where there is no power, no prayer, there is no power. Cell phones have been a major distraction for educators, parents, et cetera. They have not been used to enhance education, but instead increase illiteracy and violence, especially in black and poor communities. Parent and teacher communication must be restored to stop the prison pipeline in the academic process. Educator-instructor communication needs to improve, whether it be with a child or an adult. I would like to help you bridge these gaps between the church, the courts, the communities which are prevalent in these times. Children are being gunned down instead of graduating. Feel free to contact me anytime so we can complete this process together. Thank you for your time, your attention, and the sacrifices that you make for the school system and for all of us. We must study to show ourselves approved, work men and women, needing not to be ashamed, rightly dividing the word of truth, because the word of truth is what makes all of us free, our children, our families, our communities. And please, find that money, that rainy day fund money, because it's no longer a story rhyme, it's a real time in these times. Thank you.
Thank you, Apostolate. Next, we have Nicola Thompson.
Y'all have a blessed evening.
You too. Thank you.
Good evening, board members. My name is Nikki. I have three children within the district. My son Caleb currently attends Essex ELP. This is his second year in the program. His introduction to school started last year at Stewart. With small class sizes, a fantastic environment, and our wonderful teachers, we enjoyed our first year establishing his IEP and making plans for Caleb's future. We concluded the year in confusion and uncertainty as the news of Stewart's closing rippled through and broke all of our hearts. I personally had no idea where Caleb was headed until a month before school started when I received a letter from Transportation asking how I would like to get Caleb to and from Portage Path CLC. With this new information, I attended an open house and a one-on-one with his new teacher. With a class size of 19 children, more than one with special needs, one teacher, one assistant, and a door with no gate for runners, I was apprehensive. His teacher assured us that we would try for at least a week and see if it was a good fit. Day one concluded with his special needs teacher, who was to be in his classroom only two days a week for a few hours each day, walking him out to say that it had been a tricky day, but they would see us tomorrow. That night, I received a call telling me that Caleb was not welcome back and other arrangements would be made for him. That night, I cried. This rejection of my child after assurance broke me. The next morning, however, I woke up mad. This failure is on you. My child was established with the district and his needs were no secret. The fact that anyone thought mainstreaming him with 20 other children would work is preposterous. After two weeks, it was suggested that he go to Essex. With hesitation and anger, I went to see what was being offered. Once I saw the staff, many from Stewart, and many new loving faces, I was thrilled to know that Caleb would now have a school home. And now this. We've already established that for my child, and I'm sure many others, mainstreaming will not work. Children will not get the benefits of the personal attention on a CLC scale, and the fellow classmates will not get the education they would with special friends causing distractions. In the 30 minutes of daily gym time that they are assured of in their current location is essential as movement for these friends is just as important as ABCs and 1-2-3s. My son's smallest accomplishments mean the world to us, and I know that the teachers that he has had are the reason we have begun to watch him blossom. I can say with confidence that at some point in your lives, you got into the role of education for the love of children and the desire to secure a path for their futures to be better. This is not that path. Do not force these children to be ushered through, given the bare minimum, and call it an education. Please allow them to have their needs properly met, and if you can, for the sake of the children, admit your failings and release them, allowing their parents to find them the right place. I ask you to look at each child individually and classes as a whole and remind yourself of the person within who wanted to see each child truly succeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Clara Fear. Clara Fear? Or Clara?
Hello. I'm more of a parent struggling with a kid at I Promise who's been bullied for two years. Being with several people here, I've talked to with no regards of anything until my daughter finally is tired and reacts, and then she's in trouble. There is something need to be done, and I'm here today because I've talked to several people with a return of phone calls, me coming down here irate behind this with no response, emails. I have a whole team. I have a parent advocate. I have Ohio Rice worker who's reaching out and no response. Two years of this until my daughter reacts to the part where just recently, once again after another year of a kid running towards me and my daughter to fight with nobody stopping her. Heard my daughter getting a full altercation, and I'm told I'm kicked off the premises and criminal charges was filed against me. This is ridiculous. We're two years in. I'm tired. My daughter is tired. Why am my daughter constantly is not being covered? I am concerned about her safety at the I Promise School. I'm concerned about the lack of communication as a parent, a powerful parent, because I don't, I'm not. not backing down. This is just another step of me trying to get some clear communication, and as a parent, I should have that. I have many emails. I have openly had her therapist been rejected from the school. This is ridiculous, and I want some help. I'm not getting any help, and I'm coming to y'all today because I don't have nowhere else to go, and I'm asking for help with my daughter. I was told once, my daughter is not considered bullying when she fights back, but when she's egged on and she's, we're talking about kids, 12-year-old kid. What is we supposed to, what is she supposed to do when nobody is covering her? Nobody is helping her. I'm reaching out as a parent. I went to principals myself, face-to-face, hey, this is going on again. My daughter is told to turn the other cheek. Nothing is happening until my daughter gets tired and she reacts. This cannot go on, just like Taylor was saying about the bullying. These kids should not sit in school and not be protected somehow. This enough. As y'all know, we're facing this thing with this little boy who just killed himself behind this. This is ridiculous, and as a parent and a strong parent, I shouldn't be in the situations I'm in because I'm fighting for my daughter with no response.
Thank you so much for your comments, and thank you for coming down on behalf of As we, the board unanimously agreed to suspend the rules because we do care about the comments and the concerns that are being shared with us. And I want to note, our previous board meeting, I remember some of the early learning program, someone came and made comments about the program, and I think to do this justice and to show we're talking about transparency, we do have individuals usually that attend the board meetings that represent these various departments. However, also, we have our different committee meetings, and I think this may be housed in somewhere like instructional policy. But these issues, these issues, and I just want to say this on the mic that's been brought, have to be unpacked and addressed and dealt with fidelity, because this is not the first time that it's come here and questions have been asked. And those of you who know I say, I'm going to say it on the mic, right? Yes, I say it on the mic because this whole transparency thing, I'm not a person, I don't do shadow movement, and I don't slither either. I like to stand straight up and deal with issues. And so my concern is, I took notes, and I'm going to bring it to administration, and then I'm sure I'm going to get a response. And then typically, I will come back and I will read the response out at a board meeting, but this is a lot, and it's a lot of concerns, and as an educator, I'm thinking about, okay, so what are the teacher-to-student ratio for early childhood? Because the state art has that clear, and you're talking about changing beds. These are all, this is not just Akron we do at our preview, this is state-regulated things that you are saying. And so it's hard for me, and I said I want to get to case and to look around, it's very hard to wrap my head around some of the things that's being shared when we're talking about students soiling themselves. There's a lot. So yes, we hear you, but I also hear you when you say we don't need empty words. I respect that, because I believe in action steps. And so I just want to thank you, as well as the parent who came from I Promise, to share your concerns, and as a board member, I'm concerned with what you share, and I need to know what is the resolution, what are the action steps and the solutions that we're taking. So I do thank you, and I thank my board colleagues, because we need to hear the story from your end, but it also has to be a point that when we hear the response, that you need to be in a room too. Because if we're hearing this response and we're thinking things are being handled, and okay, this is an incident here, this happened in one classroom versus no, this has happened in eight classrooms. Also about the 140 vacant seats. I know last time we met, superintendent, this is, I'm putting this out here because further conversation needs to be had. We were told that because we did not have full enrollment in our pre-K programs, that as we moved students, that it was space for students. And if I'm hearing based off of these comments, that that's not quite accurate, or as they understand it, that's not an accurate statement. And so those who are in the room who work for central office in this area, so that you know the questions that I'm going to be typing up for responses are going to be aligned with this, and I'm going to send them out, and I would like to at least by another board meeting to be able to speak to this, but I'm also going to speak to these people. And I want to visit the schools, because I want to see from my own, just my professional lens, because I have, we have daycare. And so I understand the ratio and what the state requires. And so some of these things, I don't think, I don't know how it would be possible for us to function not aligned with certain state requirements. So again, thank you for sharing. Your concerns have been heard, and this is a lot, this is a whole separate meeting for all that was shared on today. So again, I do want to thank you and let you know that you have been heard, and I'm sure I would go as far as to say, I think some of my colleagues may be wondering some of the same things I'm wondering, and if not, it is my concern. So again, thank you. Now, we'll have the superintendent's report and updates.
We want to take a moment to just pause and recognize the efforts of the great work that Ms. Felicia Ferguson provided to our district, and unfortunately, she passed away. She was the daughter of Ms. Rhonda and Mr. Ben Ferguson, who are both APS employees. She worked as a student worker, and then she also became a secretarial, worked in a secretarial position throughout her time in APS. And certainly, we want to share our condolences with the family and let them know that we are thinking about them in this difficult time. We also want to say happy birthday to Board President Jackson, which is on tomorrow. Couple of national days, we want to acknowledge. National Nutrition Month, which is in the month of March. Also, National Read Across America Day, Dr. Seuss, Dr. Seuss's Day. National Employee Appreciation Day. National Maintenance Worker Appreciation Day on March the 7th, letting our maintenance workers know that we really appreciate the hard work that they put in each and every day. Also, our social work, school social work week, we want to acknowledge, I think we only have two social workers in our district, but we do want to acknowledge their work and dedication to the schools that they're working in. National School Social Worker Day is March 18th, and Certified Nurses Day, which we have nurses working in our schools on March 19th, and we want to say thank you to them for the hard work that they do each and every day. National Pi Day, which is mathematics, that's on March 14th, and St. Patrick's Day is March 17th. Thank you to our grantors, St. Hillary Parish for donating $1,200 to E C L C for their baseball program. Also, Mr. Mahoney, who donated $1,000 to North High School's wrestling program, and the I Promise School received a grant from the LeBron, yes, we can clap on that. Received a grant from LeBron James Family Foundation for $875,000 for the 24-25 school year to refund, to fund, I'm sorry, the reduction of teachers, instructional specialists, intervention specialists, teachers, and a climate team member. And so we want to say thank you to the foundation for their generosity and for always thinking about the needs of the scholars at the I Promise School. Yes, we can give them a hand on that. Congratulations also to Ms. Ann Rubel from North High School for placing seventh in the Lady Vikings Wrestling Event and earned a place on the podium and All-State Honors. Ms. Rubel finished her season with a record of 31 to 8 and won all three, 31, I'm sorry, And this is a new record for the school, and her coach said that she is a great competitor and has some of the best sportsmanship of any wrestler. CDW Logistics, a technology company, thank you for your generosity for donating three Samsung Galaxy tablets for our Scholar of the Year event, which is scheduled to be held on Thursday, May 15th at 4:30 PM at Garfield C L C. Akron native and Bookdol grad Paul Taswell won the Oscar for Costume Design and Made Academy Awards History and the Process, and he says, "I'm the first black man to receive this costume design award," Mr. Taswell said in his acceptance speech for the blockbuster Let's give him a round of applause. Yes, he is indeed a Bookdol grad. Bookdol at one time was known for the arts many, many years ago, and so we still want to acknowledge the great work, and he's a part of that legacy. So now for our, time for our Be Kind 330. At the I Promise School, kindness is spreading, one compliment at a time. In celebration of National Compliment Day, students and staff took a moment to share words of encouragement and appreciation with one another, proving that even the simplest acts of kindness can have a powerful impact. A sincere compliment can brighten someone's day, boost their confidence, and create a culture where everyone feels valued, and that's what Be Kind 330 is all about. Small gestures that make a big difference. And as we play this video, are we ready?
My compliment to Trevion is that he is a good partner to everybody, and like when people need help, he always helping them.
I like his shoes, and he's a good partner.
I like your outfit.
I like your hair.
You are a great principal.
I think you are an absolutely perfect student here.
Thank you.
You have very nice hair.
I like your personality.
So Jaden, I think you are very creative. You just bring life to this school.
I think you're a very nice person.
Devion is a great friend. He's a professional learner, and he has good shoes.
Elijah is a good friend. He a funny kid, and he's a problem solver.
I absolutely love your smile. It is my favorite part of you.
I like your shoes, and he helps people.
That she's a good friend.
Thank you so much to the I Promise School for providing that, and thank you to the LeBron James Family Foundation for the creation and sharing this event. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Next, we will have the Treasurers' Report.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With superintendent's report, let me just say that I find it, I cannot sit here and not ask something about the early learning, as we've heard teachers and parents and community leaders talk about it. I don't expect you to talk about it or debate it here, Mr. Superintendent, but I would like to get some idea about where we are with this and addressing some of the issues and concerns that we've heard tonight from our parents, from our teachers, from our community, and that we've received in various emails and communications from the communities. I was writing, I'm listening from Essex, Case, Harris, Helen Arnold, and there's probably other schools. Could you just give us just a general overview of where we are with this and where we can expect to see this going in correcting and addressing some of the concerns and issues, or whether or not there's anything to correct? We need to know, the community needs to know.
Thank you. I'm sure they do. Thank you, Ms. Sykes. And I'd like to begin by saying that, for me, some of this is the first that I'm hearing of it. So I took meticulous notes on some of the things, well, it is, it's the first time I'm hearing about some of these things.
I am very sorry, Madam Chair, Ms. Superintendent, I am very, very sorry to hear you say, as a superintendent, that this is the very first time you're hearing about some of these things.
I did not say that this is the first time I'm hearing. I said some of these things, this is the first time I'm hearing about it. I was taking notes at each of the schools. What I am aware of is that at the very beginning of the year, we had some concerns around changing tables, and so we purchased additional changing tables. But again, some of these other things I have not heard about, this is the first of my even hearing about it. So that's why I took notes to meet with the director on tomorrow to go through these things so that I can find out where we need to work in order to improve whatever those conditions are. But for me to sit here tonight, you asked me to give you an explanation, that's what I'm doing, trying to be as transparent as I can. I'm not aware of all of these things and concerns. So now that I am, now I can now act on that and work with our director to make sure that we're able to address these concerns and provide back to you a detailed explanation or listing of what we've done.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Madam Chair, again, I would just state, I am very sorry to hear that this is the first time that you are aware of some of the concerns that the individuals, the teachers, the parents, the community is bringing to us, because if we were receiving the emails over the week's time, I find it, I don't understand why these individuals would not have communicated that to their supervisors. I don't understand it. So I'm very sorry to hear that there is a serious breakdown in communication someplace, and we are, this is March, right? We're in March since the school system started in August? Yes, I'm very sorry to hear that, and I am eagerly awaiting some responses on what
Is, was there anything else you want to ask Superintendent?
Oh.
Because they talked about the, were you going to add anything like that you were aware of, like the ratio or the time, them not having breaks? Did you have any, did you hear from any supervisors with things about that from the last meeting?
So again, at the very beginning of the year, some of those things were brought to my attention. I sat and met with the director. Those were things that we were addressing. We don't have enough paraprofessionals, someone mentioned something about that. So in terms of us prioritizing that, that is something that we're prioritizing, to make sure that we can hire additional paraprofessionals, which we've been looking, we've actually been working with other companies trying to recruit. Unfortunately, there just aren't a lot of people that are seeking to come into education, whether it's paraprofessionals, whether it's bus drivers, those are areas that we've been struggling to try and fill. And when we did hire some, the priority at that time was to make sure that we placed them in pre-K. We also have a shortage when it comes to special education, which does play into pre-K, but also in our regular, in our buildings, meaning K and above, we also have a shortage there as well with teachers, special education teachers, as well as special education paraprofessionals. So we've been working, trying to work with other companies, trying to even find them, but those are some of the issues that I was aware of that we addressed before. I was not aware that there were continued issues with some of these things. So this is, some of it is the first that I'm hearing about it. So this is, some of it is the first that I'm hearing about it. So that's the reason why I want to work with the director on tomorrow to go school by school to understand what we can now do to address that.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I was trying to just go through my emails very quickly while we were here. But like I said, this will, this will be another discussion. This is gonna take time, and I'm in agreement with Member Sykes as far as the responses to the, to it. And this is for some of the central office staff that's in the room too, because if it comes to you, there is clearly, and I was gonna say this in my President's Report, so maybe I could skip my report, it's clearly, communication is not happening. Because when I sit up here, and I a hundred percent believe what AAA said to me when I met them, and as I said, because I'm not only a board member, I'm an auntie of a student at AAA. So the, some of the thing, the lack of communication and the not knowing, and I'm not saying this necessarily from the superintendent, but teams have to meet and stop making decisions on things without everyone being aware of the information and how these decisions are being made. Because the community comes, the community comes before this board, and the community, as you, Member Hall and I have discussed multiple times, they say "the board." And so the community has an expectation and understanding that the board is aware. They elect the board members to represent their various interests and to fight, to advocate for them. When we don't have all the information, it makes it very hard for us to support systems and things in place as we do. We want to support our employees, we want to support the work of the district. But we keep hearing this, lack of knowing, that people didn't know, I'm gonna talk about the people with the boots on the grounds, don't know about things that's impacting them. We keep hearing the same thing over and over again, and that, that has to be handled. It really does. And the people working in these various departments, when you guys do your nice little readouts and saying you're communicating with people, I'm, there is a disconnect. And I understand, I see the body language for the people that work here feeling uncomfortable with what I'm saying. But one thing about facts, facts are consistent. If something is factual, it can be proven. If something happened, we can measure it. If something's going on in the classroom, we can observe, we can see it. If things have been bought, we have invoices, we can see all these things. If teachers are communicating and getting emails, here's the deal. If these people been emailing people, it, we, we can prove it, right? They're gonna be able to show the trace of emails and who they talked to. So people, you can have all the body language and look uncomfortable if you want to, because people not offended, they're uncovered. And so this is our duty as, as elected officials. Now, I, I tried to be amicable with everyone, but I took this position strictly for kids and to serve kids. And I know for children to be served properly, the educators that's serving them have to be equipped. Everyone needs to be held accountable for the work to be done. And that's all I'm saying. That's all I'm saying, because we keep hearing this same thing, and it's not all, I'm talking about all departments that have to interface with these areas when we're talking about responses. And so I, I just want to say that because I don't like the thought of people feeling like that they come and their voices are heard and it's just words, and that there's no action behind it. And I want us to have, to do it with fidelity and not necessarily, not to beat anyone down, but to do the work that we're charged to do in this district. And it's, it's just that simple. So again, thank you, thank you Superintendent, and those staff members who are listening that are gonna work on this, and thank you for those who have come out from the early learning centers and departments, because you are valued, and we do know that's foundational work. And so we must work together collectively in order to see what can we do to continue to do the work and to move the district forward. So again, thank you for that, and be looking for updates from this board concerning what you have shared with us today. Treasurers, is there any other? I'm sorry. Treasure. Yeah, because it was his, he finished his report, so Sykes entered on discussion, which he can. So yes.
Not to just call, I'm sorry, thank you, Madam President. Listening to the ELP, I got about twenty questions, but I won't ask them all on the floor. But my biggest concern is, a few of them all stated, "Just make it work." So with this, there's leadership, right, in place. There's the teachers, they report to somebody, that person then reports to somebody, you know, who, and don't all answer, okay, but who are these, the teachers, who are they going to telling them all these issues? And who's saying, "Just make it work"? That, that seems to be a lot of feedback that I got from most of these teachers. And then the change kids on the floor, I would be mad if I was a parent and my child was on the floor being changed without a blanket or anything. So is it a lack of changing tables in these schools? We don't have them in the bathrooms? Yes, no? We don't? We do. Some schools. I mean, I think that would be like an easy fix, right? Maybe order more changing tables at these schools, make that a first step. But this, like you said, and Mrs. Sykes said, this is concerning about what is, what is going on, because I was so excited about us having a full day pre-K last year when we talked about, I was so excited. I was excited about people that's not in our district asking, "How can they get their kids in this?" So we just gotta figure this out, so that, like Pastor Walker stated, we'd be on the front line. Let's be excellent. Let's have people bringing their kids to our district for this early learning preschool. So Superintendent, you got a lot of work to do, and I know that you will handle it. And, you know, your staff, I just want them to come to you with these issues and concerns, and I don't know if they are, if they're not, or whatever's happening, but to tell someone just to make it work without any solution, you know, has to be hard. So that's all. Thank you.
Ms. Hall, I'm not sure where the comment came from, because it did not come from me.
I'm not saying it's from you.
So certainly, the things that I have sat down with Ms. Douglas previously, we've autumned, she, the very next day was ordering changing tables and those kinds of things. So if I know about it, we're going to move on it. If it's something that we can't fix at that moment in time, that's gonna prohibit, then we maybe have to look at movement by placing it in another room or another building or something of that nature. But pre-K is something that's very important to me. So certainly, I would not have said to, to anyone, "Then just fix it, just deal with it." No. So I'm not sure where that came from, but it certainly did not come from my office.
Thank you, Superintendent. Yeah, Member Hall, but just clarification, because you didn't say it came from, you just said generally.
Yeah, I wasn't saying it came from you, and I, I support your leadership in all things. But it's, it's being said from someone, right? So somebody's saying something and not giving the full information back and not reporting back to you. So again, the communication has to be adequate, it has to be honest, it has to be truthful, and whoever's saying, "Just make it work," we need to dig into it a little further. And as teachers, I, 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 I'm sorry, just, I'll stop right here, because it's a lot. But I, I truly support you in all, everything that you do, Superintendent, and I know that you will rectify these issues.
Uh, yes, Vice President Alexander.
Yeah, yes, I'm, I'm hearing all the things. I want to let everyone know that I hear you too. I don't say a lot, I just listen, I absorb and, and see what's going on. It sounds like, I keep hearing communication, maybe there is a lack of communication. I want everyone to know too. And, and, and this is from, this is coming from me as a, an administrator piece, that there is a chain of command, and if you follow your chain of command, it's not getting done in one spot, then you go to the next spot. If it's not getting done there, then you go to the next person, and if it doesn't get done there, then you go to the next person. If it goes to the superintendent, it's not getting done, it goes to him, and you know it goes, it's gone to him, then it needs to come to us. But don't, I don't want people skipping over either, because it's not fair to your, your supervisors either, that you skip over someone, that you wanna let someone else know, "If I'm a line staff or a teacher, then I'm gonna skip my, my school principal, and I'm gonna go to the supervisor." So make sure we go through the chains as well. So and maybe there, that's where the lack of communication is, because maybe someone may not understand or know that this has been done, and so therefore, if they're being skipped, then there is a lack of communication, because there's one person who didn't know that this is being told, because they got skipped over. So we do have to work on the communication. And I, I want, I want us to have a positive environment. I'm, I'm, I'm a big proponent of, of early childhood education. I was in the first head start class, I know what it did for me, and so I understand what early learning is all about in education. So we need to have you all here, we don't need you all to leave. Let's, let's give Superintendent a little time to get some of this stuff, stuff worked on and taken care of, but at the same time, make sure we go through that chain so everyone knows, because that's where a lot of the lack of communication can come from. And I'm, I'm saying that from, as an administrative point of view, because I've been in administrative positions, and people want to go past other people and come to me, and what I did is I sent them back. Okay, did you talk to your supervisor? Did you talk to the next person? Because then that, that's how you, the communication can, can be taken care of, and it's not missed by someone or, or a group of people. So we're gonna leave on a positive note on this here, it's gonna be taken care of, it's gonna be done, and we're gonna keep all of you here, because you're not going anywhere, we're gonna keep you here, and we'll do what we can to get some help. Okay? So we're gonna be good. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Alexander. Ms. Autry.
Thank you, Madam President. Superintendent, I just wanted to ask, I keep hearing about this number, this one hundred and forty seats. Understanding the shortage of teachers and paraprofessionals is across the country, but in terms of the need and demand for the early learning, can you give us any clarity around that? And also, I am a full supporter of the early learning program. I know many community members were excited to be able to have this opportunity for a full day, but it, it sounds like, and I know we need further research and conversation, that we might not have the staff to sustain the need. Can you give any insight at all on our numbers?
Yes, and I'm gonna ask Ms. Douglas to come up as well. But in some of the schools, we do have a lack of staff, so we have subs in some of those classrooms. And we, I think it's four or five classrooms that, I think one of them, I'm not sure exactly which school it is, they may be all in the same school, but I know there are, there are four for sure, maybe possibly one other, but I'm not sure if it's in the same school. But they have subs in those classrooms. We, so, so technically, those are four classrooms that are open, basically. If those students are distributed to other schools, yes, if we had the staff, we could keep those four classrooms and the space as well. Because before I came, the board voted to move it out of Essex and Stewart. This was kind of the last of that move, and I think we had four classrooms still left at Essex. And so those would be distributed across the district where we have the space and where we can appropriately house them. Because there are certain things that need to be in the classroom designed a certain way, basically like a kindergarten classroom, so that there's change, an area for changing tables. Sometimes if the restroom is not in the classroom, it needs to be right outside of the classroom, so many feet away from the, from the room, so that they are able to, to change. And if it, if the building wasn't built for five kindergarten classrooms, well, the, the two or three classrooms that it was built to have when the building was erected, they might only have the bathrooms in those rooms, and they have, and they would have to go somewhere else in the building, but we have to make sure that it's in within proximity. So, so those are things that we, we, it's not a matter of just going stick them in buildings, we have to make sure that we're gonna be able to be in compliance. When it comes to the hundred and forty slots, I'm not aware that we would be losing a hundred and forty slots. We may have a hundred and forty open, but I wasn't aware of us losing students. But when you don't have the staff, you can only, you can only staff. And, and yes, if we were to go back and look at how things, absolutely, this was our first year, we have a lot of learning that we've done from this, so that we can now take that into the second year, so that we can make it even more successful for next school year. But by us not having all of the staff, yeah, that has a lot to do with why we are having to do some, some placements, so that next year we can have. If it's, I've even asked for us, I even asked this year, we just didn't have the, the paraprofessionals, because I asked, can we maybe put an additional paraprofessional to help support? Like if one is out, we would still have an extra. We just don't have the, the extra paraprofessionals. I even asked it for this year coming up for twenty-five, twenty-six, but we just don't have the paraprofessionals. When we get them, we already have places where they, the need is, but I prioritize pre-K to make sure, and special education in some of our other buildings. Yes. Ms. Douglas, can you share anything that I might have missed on that?
So we're not necessarily losing one hundred and forty seats. When we look at how we can structure the, the slots that we do have and maximize capacity within our classrooms, although overall, we may have a decrease in slots, it, it would not be a hundred and forty. I will have to go back and do the math to figure out exactly what that is. I know I'm gonna have to follow up with you quite extensively.
Yes.
Excuse me, Dr. Autry. If I may, I came up because I'm the one who reported five hundred and ninety-nine scholars, and we have had available seven hundred and forty-eight seats for this school year. And so when we did our presentation in February, we had five hundred and ninety-nine scholars enrolled. So that's about a hundred and forty. I'm wondering if that's where the numbers came in, in terms of the difference. So as we are staffing for next year, and as Ms. Douglas stated, deciding what we should do, as we try to have operational excellence, as we try to make the decisions in understanding that we were short-staffed Paris this year and things like that, we made the recommendations to the superintendent and made some adjustments. But it wasn't closing those classrooms as we reconfigured some of the locations to accommodate the fact that we didn't have the staff that we continuously tried to get this year, we adjusted some of those classrooms. So as of our latest plan, we had seven hundred and forty-eight this year. We think with the reconfiguration, as we worked through, and Ms. Douglas, I believe, shared with the staff members today about which classrooms would be full day, which would be half day, we believe that we can accommodate still at about seven hundred and sixteen next school year. Some of those classrooms may not be full day. But the one forty came in the discrepancy also in thinking that we're closing five classrooms over at Essex, let's say, then if you average about, I don't know where the one forty came from, but if you average about, you know, twenty students per class, maybe that's where it came from. But the only thing I could think of is the difference in the number we have enrolled and the number we were able to offer this year.
Ms. Douglas, did you have, was there some unreadiness? It seemed like it was something else you felt you needed to share. Are you, are you okay? Did you have something that you wanted to add?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Okay, no problem, thank you. Pastor Harrison and then Member Hall.
Thank you, Madam President. One of the things that I heard was stat, well, it's, it's a theme, the staffing. The teachers are overworked, they're not getting breaks, we can't get paraprofessionals. But I also heard a living wage. Have, have we looked at what we're paying paraprofessionals as opposed to what other districts are paying them? And maybe we need to pay more to bring in staffing, because it sounded like a lot of what I'm hearing is staffing related.
Member Hall, I'm gonna let the Superintendent address that.
So Pastor Harrison, your question gets into the contractual contracts and union contracts, so I can't really sit and discuss that here. Certainly, if I could, I would certainly do it, but I can't just do it that way. It has to go through negotiations. And so in terms of their wages for teachers and for Paris, which I'm always in agreement of teachers having more and Paris having more, but we just, right now, I can't really get into that conversation with you on that. But we are, we are trying to do what we can do to, to support in terms of the pay. And we, we have other areas too, that we just aren't able to kind of have those conversations here about that.
And unto that too, when I first came into the district, I know that And unto that too, when I first came into the district, I know that at the time, President NJ Akbar, there was a study done as far as livable wages and with the focus on the paraprofessionals, so we can maybe review that as well, just to ask for some guidance. But Member Hall, did you?
Yeah, I just had a quick, thank you, Madam President. Just Ms. Douglas, real quick, all of these teachers are standing up in support of you. Do you have documentation of every single issue that these teachers have come with today?
Yes, some of them. Some of them have been brought to me previously, a while ago, and we've, I thought they were addressed. I'm hearing it sounds like there's continued, so I need to find out where there continues to be some problems. We know that staffing is a continued concern. That is something that I am definitely aware of and have been trying to work with HC really closely, and they've been doing what they can to get us better staffed.
And so just one more question. You said you thought some things were addressed, so is it that, because of your, I don't know how to say this, and I'm not trying to attack you or anything like that, just a question. Complaints that come to you, then you pass them forward, right? Does it come back to you that it's going to be addressed? Or does it come back to you saying, okay, we have all of these changing tables? Like are you in the loop with all the communication going back and forth?
Yes, I try to handle as many of the concerns on my own as possible. When I need support, then I go to my supervisors to provide support to me to do that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And what I will, as we move away from this topic, because we do know it has to a deep dive, what I experienced in this district when I first came is that I went to classrooms, I went to Firestone Park, I went to North High School, and there were things lacking that the teachers were complaining about. The classroom conditions were not conducive for learning. It was, this is not on you, I'm just using this for an example to frame up this statement. And so it was things about air condition. I mean, they were doing assessments in 90-degree classrooms. And so my question as an educator, how can we really trust this data if the children are in this uncomfortable environment, right? North High School was a science lab, the stools were like well over the table, how this is not conducive. And I was told, oh, that's just a drop in the bucket for our budget. We'll handle it, right? And so the teacher followed the chain of command. So I want the board to know that there is instances where they go to the, they reported to the principal, the principal allegedly sends it to central office. What I found in that time, when I wasn't that clear of how much in the weeds I wasn't supposed to be, because I was a teacher until I was moving that way, a lot of times the message was not making it here. And then it stopped at some point. Like I saw messages where the Treasury responded, like it's not in the budget for this. But when I turned back around and I asked about it, it was told, oh, it was fixed. So sometimes it's about us, because it is a drop in the communication and teachers may follow the protocol and somehow it gets stopped when it gets here to make it up the full chain and they're getting told a no response or it's not being responded. That's just what I personally observed in my year or two or one here, that sometimes that does happen. And so people don't have all the information all the time, so it is good to follow up or even at this forum, because this is their board and it is a public meeting. So however it's brought to us to be handled is how it should be brought to us. So again, I want to thank you all and I'm feeling confident that we can move forward in this matter to do what's best for our programming and our students. And thank you, teachers, for all the work that you've been doing and your commitment. Shai, I'm like, I should have got a text, something. This is cra, I had no idea, but thank you, thank you.
Ms. Hall, Member Hall, did you have anything additional to add? Okay, are we ready to move forward for the Treasury's report? Okay, now we have the Treasury's report.
Thank you, Madam President, school board members, Dr. Robinson. So I just want to give a brief update on where we stand on the budget bill, House Bill What I think, if you're not accustomed to looking at these bills, you would assume budget bill means it's all about money. And it is, but it's also like so many pieces of legislation, that document gets thicker and thicker and thicker, and a whole lot of verbiage and other things that really have no direct impact on the budget bill end up being part of it. So Reverend Harrison, or excuse me, Reverend Walker made a good point when he was addressing the board regarding how important this is. But it's Ohio school funding remains as top priority to the state, and they are still saying they're committed to the Fair School Funding Act, which again, the Reverend mentioned. In recent budgets, fiscal year '24 saw increases overall in the educational spending. So in year three is what we're moving into in this phased-in process of the budget bill of the Fair School Funding Plan, there are some significant changes that appear to be happening. And it just exacerbates a lot of the discussion that we were just talking about in terms of being able to find the funds to do what we need to do. But in fiscal '26, it's poised for some key shifts in this distribution of funds. So for example, a major change scheduled for fiscal year '26, this can all change, please understand that. This is what is currently in the House of Representatives at the state level. This is not federal, this is state. The reduction of the Fair School Funding Formula. So under the current plan, many districts were assured a minimum state funding level. However, in fiscal year '26, this guarantee is dropping from 100% to 95%. The next year proposed to 90%, meaning that districts will be expected to generate larger shares of funding from their local community. We know that that impacts, because of the way the funding formula works, impacts urbans far more than it impacts wealthy suburban schools or rural schools. You'll hear the word inputs a lot, inputs, 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 and you might know like, what the heck is that? So I'll give you an idea of what it is. So the Big Eight Treasurers, we just had a meeting, we expressed our concerns to our local legislators in trying to come up with a uniform response from the urbans. The current funding formula still use inputs from 2022. So what that means is the inputs are what they're telling us it costs to have a preschool student. This is what it costs to educate a special needs student or any student. Well, we're using inputs from 2022. We're not adjusting those inputs. So you can still keep phasing in the formula, but you're phasing it in on three-years-old data. That doesn't make sense. It's a way to circumvent the funding formula is essentially what it is. So that's creating quite a problem. And without updating these figures to reflect educational costs, the reduced guarantee may lead to disproportionate funding gaps, again, especially in districts where local resources are limited. The other major shift here, and it's a major shift, is recent budget proposals have reallocated funding that has historically gone to the public schools to voucher and charter programs. Although this shift has bolstered funding for school choice initiatives, it also compounds the challenges for our traditional public schools. So to put that in perspective, we have this same pool of money, but it's being redistributed. $105 million right now is being proposed to take away from public schools and nearly $1 billion moving towards charters and school choice. So, you know, again, putting a significant pressure on our public schools. So we're trying to formulate a message that we hope we can get all the school districts behind, or at least as many as we can, because voice matters, like Taylor talked about, voice matters, Reverend Walker talked about. So we want to really focus our messaging on the need to update the cost endpoints to better reflect current expenses, make them real. The potential adverse effects on districts already operating within funding bases and the broader strategy of reallocating funds to school choice programs versus supporting traditional public schools and our infrastructures, which the state of Ohio is mandated by the state constitution to do. Any legislative modifications in response to these concerns are going to really shape fiscal year '26. So, you know, in summary, I would just like to say that we have to be committed to advancing the Fair School Funding Plan, keeping that in place with up-to-date inputs that reflect the real cost of public education. And we are, without a doubt, at a very critical transition point right now. We need to focus on those data inputs, continued shifts, fighting the continued shifts towards choice. And just for example, just the voucher program of students that have never attended Akron Public Schools, never came here, they've been in privates or charters forever, is $28 million on the low end and only climbing every year for us in lost funding. $28 million is as much as we're receiving from the levy we just passed. So these challenges are real. It's important that we let our voices be heard loud and emphatically. I am making appointments with state legislators who will ever take the appointments that I can get, and I would encourage any of you that want to ride along, I'll play your music of choice on the two-hour drive. And the more that we can advocate, even if it's just a phone call, but telling our story and continuing to keep the pressure on our legislators, because that's the only thing at this point that's going to really matter in the long run of the finances. And we all know, we certainly need more funds. And I know that a lot of people are doing that, a lot of teachers, a lot of administrators, union leadership, et cetera, et cetera, is doing that. But I just really encourage you to make that a priority and we'll keep our eye on it. We won't know until June, the end of June, what the final outcome will be. So it's going to make forecasting difficult, knowledge how to move forward difficult, and that's not even to speak to $80 million or so, that's federal funds. And what may happen with those, the latest word is to send those directly to the state and then the state will redistribute them, which makes me very nervous. That concludes my report.
Any questions for the Treasurer? Member Autry.
Thank you, Madam President. And I think I shared at the last board meeting, I just want to share again, fairschoolfundingplan.com. Fairschoolfundingplan.com. If you go to that website, there are sample letters that you can personalize and tell our story. And so I'm just encouraging everyone, we can't wait till it hits us here and then we're mad at each other. And we have the opportunity to advocate right now, so it just takes a few minutes. And again, encouraging everyone, fairschoolfundingplan.com.
Thank you, Member Autry.
So last week, we sent, we communicated with all of our families, as well as employees, as well as community people, to write to our legislators in-state. And we also sent something to, we also provided information on Congresswoman Sykes as well. And for people to just, and we provided them with templates and letters, example letters, they didn't have to use those, but they could if they didn't know what they wanted to say or how they wanted to say it. So that did go out. And so we're hoping that even though there was a deadline that they provided, because our local, our in-state legislators had a deadline of when those letters had to be in, but I would still encourage people to still write anyway. You know, even after the deadline, just continue to, we have, and if you need the information, we can always provide it again.
Are there any other questions or comments for the Treasurer?
Madam President.
Yes.
Madam President, thank you, members. Let me just add one other thing that the Treasurer knows, but I'm sure just forgot to say, that one of the other thing that's happening, one of the main thing that's happening in the committees is that the legislators are saying, well, we can, the governor has presented us a budget with less input, which means less dollars, because those dollars are, as he said, $20, $22 as opposed to $20, $25. And that's because the local communities have done so well in passing levies. You forgot that part. It's like, yeah, we did, and we passed those levies, because even with factoring in the fair funding numbers, we still needed to pass the levy. And so they're using that now as a reason for not using the 2025 numbers and saying, of course, we are supporting fair funding, but we have considered all of the fabulous communities that have passed their levies and therefore they have so much money that they don't need, they don't need this extra money, so we're just still using the numbers from 2022 instead of using the monies from, the numbers from 2025. And the numbers from 2025 says, how much does it cost to educate a child? And the governor's budget says, whatever it costs in 2022, that's how much it costs. And that's the input number that he has presented to the legislators, and the legislators are now saying, and that's correct, because the communities have done such a great job in passing their levies. So if we, if they end up passing the budget with the 2022 numbers, cost of doing, cost of educating an individual child, then we are going to find ourselves in this community significantly less for what it actually costs to educate our children. And it will appear as if the levy that we pass had no effect whatsoever. So that's what we're facing. So when we talk about, when we send something to our legislators, we want to make sure we say that too. We need, we support our community. That's why we passed the levy. And we need our levy monies as well as the fair funding money in order to come close to adequately and correctly and fairly funding and educating one child. This is the amount of money we need, and the governor has submitted a significantly less amount in his budget, but yet he's getting credit for supporting fair funding. That's what we're faced with.
Thank you, Member Sykes. Are there any other comments or discussion?
All right, seeing you here in none, I'll move forward with my president's report. I would like to make an announcement first about the Sojourner Truth Legacy Scholarship. This will also be on my Carla Jackson for School Board Facebook page. The Sojourner Truth Legacy Scholarship, the Akron Press Club and Sojourner Truth Education Committee presents this scholarship. This is a $5,000 scholarship award. Akron Public Schools seniors who are considering studies in journalism, communication, marketing, or public relations are encouraged to apply. There is a QR code that is on the flyer that you'll be able to scan in order to get the application. I know last year, we had one of our Bookto students, the Marianne Starks, I think, was his name, he received the scholarship. So we're very excited about this Sojourner Truth Scholarship and how it's giving back to our learners. Also, a shout out for the counselors and everyone who shared the Hero K Stubbs Scholarship application. We're excited to see our learners be highlighted at our banquet that's coming up on April 18th. So hopefully you all can come out and support that as well. Additionally, the emails that I did receive and to hear the comments on today concerning bullying, it's very bullying, it's very concerning, and I'm deeply moved by the words of the parents and community members. And I want to give my heartfelt empathy for the pain, the distress, the frustration that was clearly expressed by this parent, and some of the consequences that it seems like she's endured as a result of issues, because it's deeply troubling. Bullying is a matter of utmost importance to myself, and I believe many of my board colleagues. I understand how profoundly it can affect a child's emotional and mental well-being. So I want you all who have experienced this, and for the parent, although she is not here, to please accept my sincerest apologies for any distress that children who's been exposed to bullying have had to endure. I want to ensure both the community and these families that we are fully committed to making meaningful changes, working to ensure that our district's code of conduct is upheld with the highest level of oversight and accountability. More than just policies, we need a culture where every child's well-being is the top priority, and where immediate effective action is taken when bullying is reported. She referenced the tragic incident of the learner, which underscores our urgency of this work, and it only strengthens my resolve to create an environment in which every student is protected and supported. I know I personally will continue to focus on building a system that not only addresses bullying when it occurs, but also prevents it through education, support, and compassion. Again, I truly appreciate parents taking the time to share these concerns with us, and for teachers and community to share with us as well when these things happen and appear to go unchecked. When I referred to our policy, and I saw that bullying was a Level III offense, which requires a suspension or some action is taken, I'm further perplexed how people can come and make complaints and say that it was reported, but no action was taken regarding the bully. I know that there's very, various levels, and I understand as a school administrator that there's always two sides to stories. But when you continue to hear a current, a constant theme that this is reported and nothing happened, and my child then responded to, to protect themselves, I have to ask the same question I asked when it was the cell phone policy. Why are we not enforcing good policies that we have to rectify these issues and these concerns that our teachers, our communities, and our students are telling us that we have? So I did want to definitely share that, and to let you know that I, I am very concerned, and I understand what can happen to the social and emotional health of a child that feels unsupported and, and forced to stay in an environment where their bullies go unchecked. Additionally, I received an email recently from peer professionals, and so it was appropriate this concern and what we're talking about on today. And the concern, though, that was shared was deeply concerning to me. And I say it on the mic, because I want you to know that I did receive it, and, and I've been processing this, and I'm going to also write a response for it. But I was catching up, as I've been having a little under the weather. But this peer professional shared that they are experiencing some brutal acts within the classroom, that they are being hit, things are happening at a level, and it's being dismissed, that there are high levels of call-offs of peer professionals. So when we talk about the underrated or underserved peer professionals in the district, that some of these issues that's been concerned, I'm sorry, that have been shared with us as issues of concern, could be also a factor, not just with the pay of why people are not trying to work or they're leaving the district. And so this, it was a very heartfelt email that I received, and again, I'm going to address it and I'll share it with the entire board. But basically, this person was saying, listen, we're trying to work, we're showing up, I even show up sick, and my colleagues, and I know people are calling off because they are experiencing these things within the classroom, and to her words, nothing is being done. So I wanted to say that I've heard your concern, and it, it does warrant a look into, in a very real way, to see how are we supporting our staff, our peer professionals in the classroom? We are, we can take a look at the livable wage, but also our systems and our policies that we have in place. We have these policies, why are they not being acted on? Why are they not being enforced? Just like we had a cell phone policy, and then we had to go and buy yonder bags and all these things, when it was a sound policy that simply was not consistently being reinforced, so therefore, the culture was not conducive for the policy. Because we let the culture, the climate and shift in the buildings then dictate our responses, instead of our policy determining our responses and our actions. So that does conclude the president's report on today. Next, we will, are there any questions for the president regarding our report? Seeing and hearing none, we will move on with committee reports. First, we have legal contracts and board policies.
Thank you, Madam President. We did meet on February the 26th at 4:30 here in this room here, and we had various things that we talked about. We had some updates that came from special air, we had some updates that come from pupil services, and so they gave us those updates. We had some good conversation. We actually did not get a chance to get into more of the meat that we wanted to, but we will get into that later. Tonight, you will hear a third and final policy, I'm sorry, third and final reading of two of the policies, is Policy 5511 Dressing and Grooming, and Policy 5511.01, which is school uniforms for grades in kindergarten through eighth, which we're going to be, which is going to be repealed. Later, also in the meeting, we will hear, I'm sorry, the back, I'm going a little too fast. Our next meeting will be on March 17th here in this room at 5:30. We will be discussing the following policies, nepotism, vendor relationships, ICO, and service providers, parents' bill of rights, electronic equipment. And so we, those will be the third and final reading for this evening, and I will be asking for motion when I'm done. Also, later, we will have, we will hear that there are other, two other policies that will be read for the second reading, and those policies will be parents and family involvement, school improvement, Title I services, special education, homeless students, children and youth in foster care, attendance, release time for religious instruction. Those will be the, the second reading this evening for those policies. And so I will need, I'm going to make a motion and hope that we will approve Policies 5111 Dressing and Grooming, Policy 5511.01 School Uniforms for, for grades kindergarten through eighth grade. I'll make a motion that we receive these policies as read. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Vice President Alexander. The, the motion has been made for Policy 5511 by Mr. Alexander. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been second by Member Autry. Is there any discussion? Member Hall?
Just real quick, on Dressing and Grooming, Policy 5511, when I was reading far as the head piece, I know we had talked about it, like, being specific on what we're saying. So I know ski mask is a big thing with these kids nowadays. And I know it says, like, hats, caps, head coverings not permitted, but are we maybe able to put in the wording, no ski mask? Because that's a big problem in our community.
I did, I did talk to Ms. Carter, and we did talk about that, and as far as the ski mask, that's considered part of a hat, and so therefore, they can't have that in, in school. So if they have a ski mask, they can't wear, hats are not permitted, ski masks are not permitted.
Because they'll wear it over their neck, like, they'll take it and pull it down, and so it's like a turtleneck until they're not looking, then it goes up over the head.
Right, and they shouldn't have those, that's a hat, considered a hat, so they shouldn't have it at, at school.
Okay. And then I just, one more.
Yes, Member Hall.
And then 5511.01, I know you talked about, Madam President, following our policies. And, you know, we've had dress code policies, we changed some policies this coming up school year. And maybe Superintendent, you can answer this. How do we make sure that these dress codes are being followed? You know, we visit schools, and we still see, you know, bellies, and, you know, earlier in the summer, shorts that were like biker shorts and things like that, kids are just walking right past administration, staff, and so forth. If we're not supposed to wear that stuff, how do we, or how do our teachers and staff and principals enforce this?
So, at the end of school last year, we sent, and we may have had two or three, is Dr. Lash here? Yes. We sent home multiple mailings. We let, even before, even once schools started this year, we sent stuff home, which we've been doing. What I have said to principals is you have to, you have to monitor this in your building. That's a part of what the executive directors for school leadership, when they go in their schools, those are things that they are supposed to be discussing, which I know they do, because I get the feedback from them with their principals. There will be times when a child is going to come into a school, some, some adult in that building has to be the authority to correct that. Instead of letting them go by, send them straight to the office and call for a parent to bring something for them that's most appropriate, but they know what they can and cannot wear to school. At the last meeting, I wasn't able to make it to the last principal's meeting, but I do plan to go to the next one to have that conversation with the principals as a reminder to them around the expectation that they, we, I'm here, I'm not in your buildings, I don't live there every day, I'm not going to know what kids are wearing to school. So if you, you have to follow the policy, help to, to implement the policy. And if that's not happening, so if you go to a school, just call me. I want to know who the kid is, I want to know which school it is, so that I can properly address that. Because I'm not there every day, I'm not going to know what they're wearing. But we have set parameters in place for them to address the dress code policy. But again, that has to be the leadership in that building, and if it's not happening, then that's something that I need to address with this, with their supervisors.
Thank you. Thank you, Member Autry, you recognized.
Thank you, Madam President. And I think I brought this up at the actual policy committee meeting, because it's probably one of the more common things when I go out in the community that I hear is about the dress code. Understanding, as Madam President previously said, we have these policies in place for a reason. And so I guess I just wanted to suggest, because I know the buildings are challenging, we're talking about these staffing shortages. I remember when we were going through the cell phone thing, and, and I remember reporting out that some of these kids turn into the Incredible Hulk if you try to take their phones away, and it's very similar with the dress code. You know, my mom bought me this, et cetera, et cetera. So I know it's challenging, but I will encourage building administrators to lean on your, your parent groups, your PTAs, your community people, I run into people who want to be involved in the community. And so maybe if some of the church groups might consider adopting a school, where they can help support, you know, these dress code challenges that we have, I hear it most, more so at the high school level. But I'm just, I just want to encourage that, because I hear it all the time, and I share with folks, as Superintendent said, I'm not in the buildings to enforce that, I know there's a policy in place. But I know the young people can, they can be intimidating, I know, but when they see people that they know in the community, they might have a different response. So this is just a suggestion and a thought that I'm putting out there to anyone who might be listening, looking for a solution to this. Thank you.
Yes, Vice President Alexander.
Yeah, I want to comment on this, too. Policies are put in place for a certain reason, for people to follow, and, and some guidance, some directions. And I will not say the school, but I was at a school one time before we got the yonder bags, I was part of the policy committee, and we had policies, who wrote the policy for the, the cell phones. And I went into a school, and I walked in there, and a teacher was there, and I walked past her, and this kid had a phone, and I said, hey, don't you, aren't you supposed to have that phone away? You're not supposed to have that phone, aren't you supposed to have it away, or put it away, or whatever you're supposed to do? He said, oh, yeah, yeah, and he put it away. But then the teacher came to me and said, thank you for saying that, that's not my job. I don't work at the school. I was at my job going into the school, and I say something, so we can, we can have all the policy we want, but if it's not followed by staff or those who enforce it, it doesn't mean anything, and we're going to be right back at the same spot again, having the same discussions, doing, trying to come up with some other different solution that we have, that we, that we will need to answer some of those questions. But we have to enforce, I, I know I, I work at a court, and it's law, but there, there are policies there, if you don't follow them, you get called upon. And I was a supervisor at one time who had several staff, and if my, if my staff weren't following them, I had to say something to them, okay? Because that was my job as a supervisor. It was my job as the superintendent to make sure my supervisors were making sure this was happening. And so there are those levels, and you got to be able to enforce. I know kids can be intimidating at times, but they also have to know that they have to follow the rules and regulations, because if we let the rules and regulations or policies, you know, not be followed, then it's going to be more and more problems, and we'll keep having the same old discussions over and over again. So what I'm saying is, in a polite way, is, you know, those who are out there, just enforcing, sometimes it's just the way you approach a kid, you know, approach them in a certain manner, it's not threatening, they don't feel threatened, and maybe they will put that, follow the policy, and if they have a hat, put it in their locker, if they're supposed to, or whatever it may be. But you got to, we got to enforce policies in, in order for people to, to follow them. And if kids know that you're going to do it, I mean, there's some schools, I'm sure we can go in to, that is, things are being, policies are being followed, and you don't have those problems, but that's what you got to do, it's got to be followed, and, and enforce policies. Thank you, Madam President.
No problem. Thank you, Ms. Alexander, Member Hall, and then we'll move on.
Just one last question. So this is the third and final read for 5511.01, which is school uniforms for grades kindergarten through eighth. So just to confirm, we are going back to uniforms next year, or we're not?
No, we're not going to uniforms.
Okay. So then, since we're not going to uniform next year, we're not going to be voting again on uniforms or regular clothes? This is going to stick for a little while? Because I know what, since the pandemic 2020, every year, this has come up for, like, the previous board, and now, excuse me, and now us.
Right.
Are we going to be voting on this every year? Or are we?
We shouldn't have to vote on it every year. Now, I'll defer to others, but I don't think we should be, should be voting on it every year, it should be, we vote on it, it's a policy, and then we, it's followed.
It was suspended, it was suspended during, as a result of COVID. So now the motion that's on the floor is to repeal it, meaning that it will no longer be a uniform. So with that in place, we wouldn't need to visit it unless a policy, someone offered up another policy saying that we need to reinstitute this, but other than that, no.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure and be clear.
Yeah.
Because it's been consistent for the past four years.
Because it was suspended, yeah.
Voting every year, and so some people may not, you know, know, or they're like, okay, they're going to vote again next year, are we going to go, so?
Good question, yeah.
This is.
It's only because it was suspended, so each year it came up, then they suspended it again to give more time to work through it, so the, good question, thank you.
Thank you.
Member Mollnar, did you have something? Okay. All right, Mr. Alexander, he made the motion, it was seconded by Ms. Autry, and now, roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Mollnar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. Next, we will have Finance and Capital Management.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Finance and Capital Management will meet on March 17th, 4:30 in the boardroom.
Thank you, Member Sykes. Instructional Policy and Student Achievement. Member Autry?
Thank you, Madam President. So the Instructional Policy Committee met this past Monday, March the 3rd. We had several presentations, including from the I Promise School, from Principal Stephanie Davis and staff member Stephanie Arnett and Kelly Pistello. And what they shared with us is their IPS house system, which was created to increase the culture of safety and belonging, universal expectations, school-wide community, character building, and healthy competition. This is something that they adopted after visiting the Ron Clark Academy in Atlanta that was sponsored by the, the foundation. And so they have been implementing this, going step by step, and it is also aligned with our current PBIS program. So it looks like it's going really well. They had a video of some of the things that they're doing, and it's just continuing to unfold and grow. Also, we had a presentation from Marcy E. Bright. Also, we had a presentation from Marcy Eubright and Beth Winter, updates around our College and Career Academies of Akron. They did complete an audit of our existing elementary partners, including embedding career exploration in our Akron after-school programs. They've met with the Portrait of a Scholar design team and are re-envisioning the social and study skills and establishing Building Portrait Champions. Also, they talked about the Amazing Shake, which is a program that teaches scholars manners, discipline, respect, and how to conduct themselves in a professional environment. And it's currently being implemented with the fifth-grade scholars across the district. And then, lastly, we did get an update from Marcy Eubright around Bookto's Teacher Academy pathway, in which it was shared, well, I had previously learned at my visit at Bookto, talking with students, that the program had been moved to Firestone. And so I asked for an update, and it was shared with us that this has been the lowest-enrolled pathway, and it was shared with us that Bookto still has remaining pathways available. And so I know some documents were provided to us, some numbers, and so those pesky numbers, which can be made to support whatever it needs to support. And so I understand and appreciate what was presented to us, and I think I shared, then we ran out of time. But historically speaking, before I got on this board, it's been the case that programming seemed to not be able to stick at Bookto CLC. And so numbers is a common reason for that. I mean, I know over this time as well, the redistricting had been changed, I know there's students who live very close to Bookto who are zoned to go to Firestone. So we're talking about these numbers. And sometimes it just feels like they're being used against us. As I sat here and listened today about all of our staffing challenges with teachers and paraprofessionals, I just don't feel like we've done our due diligence in making sure that this program could be successful at Bookto. I know during the time that the program was being revamped, that there was a substitute in place, and it was probably even an interim principal at that time. When I visited the school two weeks ago, there were 15 subs in the building at that time. So you have to wonder how successful our pathways can truly be when you have that level of instability in a building. And so historically speaking, I remember when Bookto had fire safety, which is now at Ellett, and it was already alluded to that we had a performing arts program. In fact, that's why I wanted to come to Bookto. But by the time I got there, it's gone. And so now I guess we can add Teacher Academy to the list. But I did want to share that I know that that team made a valiant effort to grow that program. I know it was in the single digits for a while, and most recently had grown to 22. But then they were told to stop recruiting for that program, and that it's being moved to Firestone, because they, their students have more interest. So I'm sharing that out, because it's frustrating after all of these years, it kind of seems the same theme. And I know this precedes you, Mr. Superintendent, but as Madam President often says, saying it on the mic is important. So I just wanted to share that much. One other item that I have asked to be brought to the Instructional Policy Committee in light of all of these staffing issues is a presentation around Teach for America. And in some circles, I hear that's a dirty word, I don't know why, but that's why I'd like a presentation to learn more about it. My understanding that it's a program where young graduates will come and commit to two years, and sometimes they end up staying. And I think if they saw the awesome programming that Akron Public Schools has to offer, they might consider that. But we have to do something different, we can't keep saying, year after year, these staffing challenges that we have. I know Bookto and East consistently, since I've been on this board, are averaging 15 and up in substitutes, and that's just not acceptable. And so they're losing out, losing pathways, and so I just think we can do a little bit better. And so my co-chair, Summer Hall, if you want to add anything?
Feel free.
Thank you. Just real quick, I know during the IPS House System, when they talked about their process and policy, and what they were doing there, and also the third graders going to houses, kind of like a Harry Potter movie, right? You get, you don't get the hat, but you get to spin a wheel and go to a house, which I thought was amazing. And I also said that day was, I encourage other schools to come to this committee and talk about what's going on in your schools, the success in your schools, so that we can hear about it. And then also to what you said, all the substitutes, I heard that last Friday, East had 28 call-offs, 28 teacher call-offs. So teachers had to, again, miss their lunch, then get their planning period, to go and take over a classroom, or the principals and substitutes. So when we talk about this lack of teachers, but then we have all these call-offs, like, what do we need to do differently? What new innovative ideals do we have to do for the teachers that come to work, to get new, to get more help? We just have to really sit down, and everybody will have to work together and try to figure out a solution for our school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Hall, and Member Mollner.
Thank you, Madam President. I feel compelled to say, I had the flu a couple of weeks ago, I know this is an incredibly bad flu season, almost everyone I know has had, you know, there's lots of things going around, and there are entire schools that have had to close because so many people in their building have the flu. So once again, thank you to those of you that are coming to work. I'm so glad and so proud that our district has not had to cancel school due to illness. Thank you.
Yes, Member Autry?
Thank you, Madam President. I did have a question that I was hoping could be answered regarding the Bookto pathway. And so I know it was stated that the students at Firestone had more interest. Was it offered to any of the other high schools?
Good evening. Just to sort of clarify, Firestone's numbers were always going to get another pathway. That process was already in place concurrently at the same time that Bookto was looking at what was going on with their pathways. It just so happened that when they did the investigation, it came back as one of the top three that the children and the advisory boards and the labor markets recommended. So it made sense at the time, in order not to lose an education pathway altogether, to allow that pathway to be the pathway that was added to Firestone. So it was never moving from one to the other, they were always getting another one to begin with, it just was happening at the same time. So as far as being offered to other schools, all those factors that were in the report, there's several factors. Marcy never makes this decision. There's several factors that go into play, the recommendations of the advisories, the recommendations of the labor market, the staffing, you know, we had significant cuts in this district, and sometimes hard numbers come across with staffing issues, we make those recommendations. So there's lots of factors that come into play at the end of the day, so, and where it would go to, so I think your question was, do other schools offer the education pathway? No, because no other schools needed another pathway. Does that answer your question?
Somewhat.
Okay.
But thank you.
Okay.
The next instructional policy meeting is April 7th at 4:30. This may be a, thank you, finish, because 28 call-offs, and so if the assumption is they have flu, I'm asking this question because I know in a building, we have a certain high population of students, if they call off for flu, for flu or some type of outbreak, then it's recommended to close and maybe, what is it for staff? I'm just curious.
Good evening, President, excuse me, good evening, President Jackson, Vice President Alexander, members of the board, and our Superintendent Robinson and Treasurer Thompson. Actually, we have always been fortunate enough to have a number of subs that can do it. We haven't gotten to a point where we've had to close due to lack of staffing. Now, I'm not saying we don't ask staff to collaborate with each other as the team in HC puts out the subcalls in the morning, no one has actually ever said to us that they could not cover for staffing.
But if it's, okay, if it's illness, right? Say if, like, five teachers call off, then 10, then 15, then is it a point where we have to say, okay, we need to?
If we were informed that there was not enough staff members, and I'm going to use something slightly different, if you watch carefully, a week ago Coventry had to close school because they didn't have enough bus drivers due to the lack of flu, or flu that was running through. So we are large enough that we usually have enough staff members, no one has ever gotten to that point. I actually got the most recent update from Summit County last Thursday, and I'm happy to report that flu is on the way down, and it was on the way down in school attendance at a rate of 17.1%. So I think we're at the end of the flu season, it seems to have been extremely hard this year to Dr. Mollner's particular item. I won't necessarily know that that isn't going to be a trend that will keep going as we get into the better, better weather, it just seems to be a very long season. We did our flu clinics, we had our students be able to get a flu vaccine if they liked to. I don't know exactly what families do when they don't take advantage of the flu clinics that we offer.
Okay, I just was asking for illness spread.
Yeah, we have not gotten to a point where somebody said that they felt that a particular school didn't have enough staff.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, outside of staff, I'm just talking about the spreading of the, like, sickness, like, if, if it was, like, what's the percent, I know, like, a school in Georgia shut down because the percentage of the student population that were getting called off for flu. So they shut the schools down to detox, and that's what I'm asking, like, do we do that for teacher or student?
We have certainly sanitized our buildings, we keep them clean and with our custodial staff, and we do have the right materials to do so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, next we will have the Equity Committee.
I am temporarily, I am the co-chair of the Equity Committee, but temporarily chairing while we go through the equity policy and all of the related features to the equity policy. So since our last meeting, the Equity Committee has met twice, February 26th and March 3rd. We started going through our equity policy, and now we are moving through with our racial equity policy, as we are looking, not at reacting to a Dear Colleague letter, but we are looking at a long-term, sustainable policy revision and review, as Reverend Walker, I don't know if he's still here, as he said, as we look at how we can continue to serve and support the needs of our students moving forward. And we are having a lot of really great participation, as I alluded to in my community reflection, with a lot of interaction and involvement, board members, administration, community members, as we come together. And instead of, you know, rushing through a hasty policy that sets you up for regret, we're looking for something that will be sustainable and successful for our district. And the next committee meeting was going to be tomorrow, but the board cannot meet in the boardroom tomorrow, someone else is using it. So it is going to be Thursday, the 13th, at 5:30.
I believe the next committee up is Equity, is that correct? Oh, then we've gone through all the committees?
Yeah.
Okay.
So you want to let the vice chair handle that?
Approval of minutes.
I'm sorry, personal recommendation?
Mr. President, Mr. Vice President, Mr. Treasurer, would you please note that the president is not in the chair and that the vice president is conducting the meeting? Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Number nine.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Approval of previous meeting minutes.
Got it, got it. We need to have approval of meeting minutes from Monday, February 24th, 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Pastor Harrison, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Mollner, any discussion? No discussion, roll call, please.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Mollner?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Next we will have Personnel Recommendations from our Superintendent.
Thank you, President Jackson. Personnel Recommendations, Section 10, are there any questions on Personnel Recommendations?
Proceed, Superintendent. Proceed, our question.
Then I wish to recommend the approval of the Personnel Recommendations presented in Categories 10 through 20. Please, thank you.
So moved.
Yes, we're on 10.
I said in Section 10, that's why I was asking if there were any questions on Personnel Recommendations. Okay, so in Section 10, none, Section 11?
Okay, so he says Section 10, Section 11?
Section 12. Section 13. Section 14. Section 15.
Madam President, so we just heard from, um, Member Mollner about Equity Committee, and I just need some clarification. So on Section 15.3, Reclassification of the Administrative Secretary, so is this position still, will this position still be in the DEI office, or is this position someplace else?
This position has nothing to do with the DEI office. This is, this position is in the Labor Relations area where the General Counsel would be, but also because the current employee that also works with some of the legal stuff, there are some concerns that were brought to me. And so I tried to, I guess, work through those things, and the employee is being very cooperative and working with us, but there are some, some issues on the load that, and so this person would be also as a backup and also assisting her while also doing some of the work that has to be done in Labor Relations, because there isn't anybody there right now. But this has nothing to do with the DEI office at all.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Okay, thank you, Mr. Superintendent. I asked that because I'm just looking at the person that's going from that, from this position, Secretary III, to the Administrative Secretary Confidential, and so that person is in the DEI office.
Yes, but that person applied for the job.
That person applied for the job. Now, how long has this position been open?
This position, this would be a new position here.
This is a new position.
Yes, but it would be in our, in our budget that's, we're going to be presenting next meeting, the Finance Committee meeting, we'll be discussing some of those things and finalizing that in April. But that is going to be a position that's already budgeted for.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Madam Jackson, may I ask another question? So, so this position is not budgeted yet, is what I hear you saying. This is not in the budget.
Not for, right, but it will be in, for the upcoming school year.
But not currently in the budget?
Right.
But is effective tomorrow?
Well, it, I'm not sure, let me look at the date exactly. It might be tomorrow, yes, if approved.
But it's not in the budget?
Not, not right now. It is not for this year, for 24, 25.
So how are we approving this if it's not in the budget? How are we paying for this?
We have other positions that we didn't feel in other places that we can offset it. So it's not going to do anything to our five-year forecast or our budget, but we will be offsetting it.
But it's not in our budget. It is effective tomorrow.
Right.
So, Mr. Superintendent, Madam President, so if we have not approved this in the budget, then my question would be, how are you paying for this position effective tomorrow?
We always have provisions to make for things like this, Ms. Sykes. I would much rather address that issue around the budget and keep an employee rather than overwhelming somebody who is, who has the expertise, and if they leave, then we're going to have a bigger problem. So, yes, I'm, I'm asking the Board to work with me on this because there are issues that I can't sit on the floor and discuss in public about somebody's employment.
Absolutely not.
So.
But we can discuss what's in the budget, and this position you just said is not in the budget. So how are you paying for this position? It's a very simple question.
Yes, it is a very simple question, and I said that it's going to be offsetted by other things that we didn't feel.
But you don't have the approval from the Board to do that. It is not.
That's the reason I'm bringing it.
That is not what you're saying.
And asking for an approval.
That is not what you're asking, Mr. President, Mr. Superintendent. But let me just move on to another issue that I have. So we heard the report from the Equity Committee, and that we are working diligently for a long-term policy. And so we may not call this diversity, equity, and inclusion. Let's just say we call this fairness and opportunity. But what I'm watching here is that this Fairness and Opportunities Office maybe is being dissolved before our very eyes, because we also have on the Equity Committee two coordinators' positions.
So those positions, Ms. Sykes, has absolutely nothing to do with the DEI office. Nothing.
Yes, Mr. Superintendent, I understand.
Those are positions that we needed anyway, irregardless to the DEI office. I haven't dissolved anything. Right now, that office is still intact. Nothing has been done to that.
So, Mr. Superintendent, so it is the intent of you to replace the Secretary III position in the DEI office or the Fairness Opportunities Office?
Well, I really can't say what we're going to do until I know what we're doing, because that, right now, I don't even know. So, nothing is being dissolved. So when, if the person is approved, they will currently still have an opening in that office, but I wouldn't go about filling anything until I know what we're doing and what direction we going in.
But.
But it would be there so that when I know what we're doing, we can, we would have a position there.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. So this accounting procedure I'm just not familiar with, whereby we are hiring individuals, we have not budgeted for this position, the position is scheduled to start tomorrow, and there is not any money in the budget for this position. I'm just not familiar with this accounting procedure that you're using. And my concern is that even if we find that the DEI office, we have to make some changes there, that we do appear to be dissolving that because the two coordinators' positions in the Equity Committee because it was, and it was referred to Equity because it was our understanding that the individuals in DEI were going to be offered these two coordinators' positions. Is that not correct?
Those positions, which, which is what I was trying to explain a couple of weeks ago, those positions have nothing to do with DEI. Those are positions I was asking, and, and not filling them this year. Those were job descriptions that I was asking for in preparation for our planning for next year as we're doing our restructuring, replanning, reorganization, rather, for next year. In the event that we would have had to do something, this was an opportunity for them, but even if we, even if we didn't have to dissolve it, I still would be asking for those positions, given the work that has to be done. And, and so, no, that even, even if those people moved, I'm not sure what direction we're going in in terms of the DEI work. So those positions are, would still be there. And once I know what we're doing, then I can fill those positions if we needed to fill them. But these job descriptions, which I was trying to explain a couple of weeks ago, have absolutely nothing to do with the DEI work or moving people. It, the, the opportunity was offered, which would have been a wash if we were dissolving, but once I understood what direction the Board, or I think I do, understand the direction that the Board wanted to go, I still needed it anyway for the preparation for next year, and that was approving job descriptions, but not hiring somebody currently in this particular school year. Just making sure that I would have those positions approved, that the job description approved, so as we're planning and during the restructuring and reorganization for the 25, 26 school year, I would have those, those job descriptions already approved.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Madam President, may I follow up with one more question, comment? So this issue that we have before us tonight is a position whereby we've been asked to, and I totally support advancement. I want to see advancement, especially for females. I totally support that. However, this budget, this position has, the money is not in this, in this budget this year. And therefore, I do not, as I say, understand the accounting procedure that would allow us to approve this position whereby we do not have money in the budget to pay for it.
Ms. Carter?
So we do have, at first, while we were thinking that we were going to need to make some adjustments with the DEI office, at first, we were not going to replace this position, but we do have positions that we are not replacing, and one is actually in the Human Capital Department, which is the Personnel Tech, which the salary is comparable to the salary of the Confidential Secretary. I reviewed this with Dr. Thompson, and he basically explained that that would be mostly a wash as relates to not filling the Personnel Tech and then adding this position. Also, we have positions next year that will not be filled due to attrition as relates to retirements as well. That's going to help with supporting some of the reduction and reorganization within the district.
Member Harrison?
I'm not speaking specifically to 15.3, but I'm speaking to budgeting. So we've heard about needs in buildings that are not filled. I'm not sure how, and I'm glad Dr. Thompson weighed in with Human Capital, but I believe that the last meeting, we talked about $7 million off of our scheduled forecast. Was that correct? Madam President, can I ask the Treasurer for the record, how much were we off of our forecast amount?
Expenditures are about $7 million over, and revenues about $2.6 million over. So the difference is about $4.4 million.
Okay, so $4.4 million over right now, and we're going to adjust the budget in the next five-year forecast to account for the $4.4 and potentially new positions?
Our five-year forecast wouldn't be impacted by what we're doing in terms of us going over budget. When you have an FTE in one area of your district that you're not using, you can move that somewhere else in the district, and it's not going to.
Can you, you said FPV, I don't.
FTE.
Yeah.
That's just a position.
Okay, full-time, okay, yeah, I was like, okay. Yeah, and that would be my point.
But I would also like to say, Pastor Harrison, that a part of the offset of the $4 million is the project that is for one of the schools, that we can't put in an 034 account. It has to come out of general fund. And so that, that has something to do with the $4.5-ish kind of.
Are we talking about the BTO?
Yes.
Okay, so we're talking about the BTO, but I want to stay with the finance here.
Well, I was just explaining to you.
No, I understand, sir. Yeah. Well, I wanted to ask about the BTO because we, we talked about the BTO before we did the forecast, and prior to you being here, we talked about BTO.
Yes.
And prior to the last Superintendent, Dr. Christine Fowler-Matt, we talked about BTO. So the, the capital projects that we, we have promised community that we were going to complete, they should not throw us off on our budget, because those are projects that are already on the table, that we've already promised, that we have continued to put aside. But when we start to add positions, and we're moving now towards our next five-year forecast, and I understand we're not going to hit the five-year forecast. That's, that's the forecast, and we just try to get as close to it as we can. But adding positions, and this is, we've looked at the two positions that we voted on last meeting, we're looking at adding another position, we've heard the building, the early learning program, we heard that they have needs, we've heard about staffing issues, substitute teachers at BTO, we've heard about not having a lot of stuff on the ground level. And when I'm saying ground level, I'm saying building level, and I think at a certain point we have to stop putting people in this building and start putting people in school buildings.
I agree. I agree with you.
So we are actively trying to recruit paraprofessionals in other positions that we are lacking. I know Larry Johnson just held a job fair here and has attended a job fair. They were somewhere all day last week in hopes of getting more substitute teachers and more paraprofessionals. He's also working with the University of Akron in hopes of getting a program started where they would work for us and we would get reimbursed by the university, and we're hoping that some of these creative things that we're doing will help with filling some of our paraprofessional needs where we are seeing a shortage.
Madam President, may I ask another question? So I still wasn't clear, Mr. Superintendent. So for the office that's working with the Committee on Equity, that we're really trying to work and come up with, with a solution for that, and looking for fairness and opportunity, and making sure that when we hear about what's happening in our schools, when we heard about Caleb tonight from the parents today, because that, that would be another child that we want to make sure does, that needs some extra assistance, that it has fairness and opportunity, that we are going to have an office that's dedicated to this, an office with staff that's dedicated to this, and that we're not dissolving this office is my, is my concern, because that.
I don't know exactly.
I can't hear you, please.
I'm sorry. I'm not doing anything because I'm not quite sure where we're going, so we're not dissolving anything right now.
So my question is, is there going to be a secretary in the DI, DEI office now to work with the Committee as we still work towards, and work with the staff that's there, towards coming up with language that's going to be offered, that's going to be fair and have opportunities for our 20,000 students and our 4,500 staff people? Are we going to still have a functioning office that's working with us to help us do that?
So to your point, Ms. Sykes, I can't sit here on the microphone and tell you anything that I don't know.
Mr. Superintendent, you are the Superintendent, and you have the responsibility to adequately staff the office.
Ms. Sykes, if you let me finish, I will be glad to answer your question.
I have, but don't know, don't know, I didn't do it, I don't know, is not an answer anymore for me.
Well, I'm referring to the directives that we've received through the President of the United States.
Have you received a directive other than the original Dear John letter that we receive, or Dear Constituent, Dear, Dear, Dear Colleague Letter that we receive? Have you received something else from the, from the Presidents who, and I may add, that was not a law, that is not a law, that is not how we get a law, we know that, how we get a bill passed? That was not, that was just a Dear Colleague Letter. So have you received anything else that would say that we should look at not continuing to function in this office?
So I have not received anything like a directive, but we are getting information through even the state of Ohio in terms of things that are happening there. Hopefully this week, I will get information in terms of any updates that they are providing to just, to Superintendents within the state of Ohio, specifically Ohio. So hopefully by the end of the week, I will have some updates of whatever's being done, and then I can share that information. But I am not dissolving anything until I know what direction the Board is saying that we're going. So it would have to be posted, and someone can apply for it. But I wouldn't want to put somebody in it right now until I know exactly what we're doing and what direction we're going, and how, how it's all going to be structured.
So you're not filling positions, so will we have a temporary person there?
I was asked, Misty Wheeler did email me yesterday, and I told her I would ask the Superintendent if we can get a Sub-Secretary. So she, because I know that Dr. Chapman asked for a Sub-Secretary, I said I will check with the Superintendent via email. So I didn't get a chance yet to ask him about a Temporary Secretary, but we do have Sub-Secretaries.
Again, I just can't say enough, you know, that we may not call it diversity, equity, and inclusion, but we need something within this district that recognize that we need to let our students and our staff know that we're trying to be as inclusive, that we're trying to be, not inclusive, we're trying to be as fair as possible.
I understand.
And that we are trying to provide as many opportunities as possible regardless of who they are, and that is still very important. And to dissolve that office and not to put it where it deserves would really be a disservice to this district and to this community.
So, Ms. Sykes, again, I'm not dissolving anything until I know, I've been to the meetings that you all have had, listening, because, to your, to your concerns and your thoughts, and then I then would work with my team to determine how we would go about making that work for the district and what all is needed there, once I understand the full picture, because there may be additional staff that may be needed. I mean, it just depends on the focus that the Board, but it is very important to me, you know, that our district, we don't, and I think I said that before, we're not, I don't care what a law or a bill or whatever, we know what we need for our babies, for our community.
Right.
That's one of the things that I sat and told the Board that was, that was there at the time, that I would provide, and I'm not going to go back on my word, I'm going to be in compliance with whatever I'm supposed to do, whether that's to the Board, to the State, whatever. But I have been watching a lot of articles that are coming specifically from the state But I have been watching a lot of articles that are coming specifically from the state of Ohio, which to Dr. Thompson's point is a little concerning even to me as well. It's not just the federal funds, but it is also other funding mechanisms that will impact our district. We're looking at all of that. I have shared that information even on the federal side of our money that, and I've leaned central office very much. I've cut it completely down significantly. So to your point, what I can assure you, once I understand the vision and where we're moving with this with the board, then I know what I need to do in terms of internally ensuring that we have a place that is going to look at our district. We may be restricted on certain words and things that we can do, but we're not ever going to lose sight and misstep on what our kids need to be able to thrive and to enjoy school. I don't want any of what's happening for our kids to see or feel a difference in the classroom. I know they hear things on TV and they're talking to people, but when they come to school, we just want them to have a continuum of the great things that are happening for them. And we just have to figure out, how do we still provide those things?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Just one last statement I will make, and that simply is that even though we may not be able to keep the words DEI, we still have laws in this state and in this country. It's called civil rights and protective classes. And those individuals are still in this, should be a part of this and should be considered at all times. And I just think that working to make sure that we have presence in this district, that we're visible in this district and saying, this is like the young man said from north, you know, he said when he walked into the school that he saw a sign that welcomed him in his language, and that had nothing to do with his race or his sex. It just had to do with him as an individual and feeling that he was a part of our school system because we recognize and appreciate his language, just the word welcome. So that's what I'm looking for. I'm just looking that we continue to keep that throughout our system.
I think that as we work...
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I'm sorry for taking up so much time.
I think that as we work collaboratively together, Ms. Sykes, we can still provide all of those same things.
Superintendent, this discussion is in it. Thank you, Member Sykes, for that. Now, just for clarity, this is for you, Mr. Treasurer, because I heard, because I'm trying to get clarity on this position too, that it's a, there is another position that is currently not filled in the Communications Secretary. Is it currently vacant?
It's going to be. She's retiring. But the position I'm talking about that's vacant, that would help with creating a wash for this position, if we, for this position, would be the Personnel Tech in Human Capital.
Which is vacant currently?
Currently is vacant.
Okay, so that Personnel Tech position is vacant. It's from personnel, full-time personnel?
Yes.
So the money's in our, that line, that's in our budget currently?
We have not filled that position since we lost that person.
Okay, so am I to understand then that you're saying that, because I'm very, with the conversation unclear, so that that money then...
We're repurposing that, we're repurposing that position that we would have used...
Which is already in the budget.
Yeah, so instead of us filling that Personnel Tech, we're going to be hiring the Confidential Secretary.
Okay. And it's money that's already, because they said it was not, you're saying this is money that's already in the budget?
Correct.
Is this what you're understanding too?
Yes. When I met with Dr. Thompson, I talked, okay, yes.
Because when it was, because when, I was listening when Sykes asked the question, that's why I'm trying to get clear, clarity. I wanted you guys to, sorry, to repeat it because I thought it was said next, something about next year, that it wasn't currently in the budget.
Correct.
And so that's why I'm trying to be very specific with my questioning, that there's a vacancy currently with money.
Yes.
For payroll. And you're saying that because that is, position is vacant, it's not going to be filled, that then this salary would be absorbed by this position?
Correct. And like Dr. Robinson was saying, we're not going to fill this position, but we're going to support it with the Subsecretary until we do fill the other position as relates to the position that the person that's going into the Confidential position is taking.
So the Subsecretary is for the secretary that, is this the secretary position that Ms. Sykes just inquired about as a sub?
Correct. We'll replace it, we'll replace that position with a Subsecretary for right now.
Okay, I wasn't understanding that was confirmed.
And then we do have a Personnel Tech position that we're not filling.
Which would be the wash for this...
Correct.
This position that this other young lady has applied.
Correct. But at first, I thought we weren't going to be filling the DEI Secretary position.
But you are with a substitute person.
But we are. And like I said, I got an email last night from Misty asking...
I understand. I'm just trying to see where the money, that I'm seeing the flow of money, because with the first discussion, it was not clear to me that there was...
Right. And in all honesty, we have several positions that we're not filling, but I just know that we have options as it relates to which position we're going to use to repurpose in order to get this position. So it's going to be the Personnel Tech, and it's not going to be the DEI Secretary.
Okay, I understand.
Knowing that we don't know what we're doing right now.
Okay. Member Molnar?
Thank you, Madam President. First, I want to acknowledge that I appreciate the superintendent says it's difficult because you don't know what direction the board's going to go, right? It's hard to make a decision and say what I'm going to do with this position because we're not sure where it's going to go. And that's exactly why there are so many times I've asked for the org chart for this district, and I've made such a big deal about the org chart. It's so difficult as we approve a position, move a position, you know, Ms. Carter right here is a great example of, I have no idea where you are on the org chart right now, like not even the first clue. And so as we move and repurpose and people are coming in and out, I don't even know where the department headings are on the org chart. When we met on the 21st, you said that you would have an org chart for me on the 24th, that was our last board meeting, and you were there. And so I don't know where we are and how as a board can we keep making these decisions? And so this Friday, and as in a Friday notes, I asked again for an update. And so as of Friday, it was that this was a new position and that this position would not be replaced. It sounds like since Friday, changes have occurred. So this still feels incredibly unstable for me, that so much is changing since Friday. But also on Friday, what I asked for was a follow-up on our February 21st conversation about the budget. I'm not asking for a new budget. I'm asking for a copy of whatever it is you're working off of. If this position's coming here and it's coming off there and it's a wash, just show me what it is that, where the wash is and where the wash is coming from and what these are. And so as of Friday, and so I did just receive a piece of paper, I have not looked at it yet, but as of Friday, it says, it said that, "I want to ensure to provide you with an accurate response, but unfortunately, the individual responsible for providing the necessary information did not share it with me before their departure. I don't know who that is or how long they've been gone. I'm actively working to obtain the details and will follow up as soon as possible." But even then, I didn't know when I'd receive it. So I guess, how do we know the position's a wash if we didn't have, like not even I didn't have the information, but you didn't have the information that you could even share with me? Where's the wash? And so I am incredibly, as a fiduciary responsibility for our taxpayers, for our community, I am very uncomfortable with this. And then on top of that, knowing that we're supposed to be in the middle of, we are supposed to do our 2025, 2026 fiscal budget reduction and restructuring. And so now we're already behind, and we're creating new positions, and we still need to restructure. This entire situation seems very irresponsible to me, and for that reason, I understand that there's two things happening at once, right? There is an individual who might have a situation, but there are also positions that we are building and creating and moving. And I feel for the situation for an individual that luckily we have lots of open positions that might be fine. But as far as creating and building positions without a budget and without an org chart, I would like to propose, I'd like to move this, we moved the other positions to the Equity Committee. This feels like Equity Committee. I would be fine also moving to the Finance Committee where we can look at the document with numbers that we have not seen or reviewed yet. I don't know if anyone else has seen these, but I would like to move this conversation to a committee before we approve a new position when we're already in debt. Thank you.
Can I just explain?
I want to say something first. Vice President Alexander? Thank you, Madam President. When you have a budget, okay, you have some money there, you have line items, you spend on your line items. If I don't spend on one line item, I have money left, I can use another line item, okay? And so I can transfer. If I have a position that is open, okay, or several positions that are open that I have, I don't have to pay, I'm not paying out any money, that's money there. So there's three positions, there's $25,000, that's $75,000, okay? So that money is there. All I'm doing is moving it over here to pay for this position, okay? Now, in Akron Public Schools, our budget starts again on July the 1st, okay? We have several months, couple months before we can move. I don't see a problem with this here. I'm just sitting by, listening, and I'm saying, if there's money there, why can't we make these moves if we want to make these moves? Now, if we get to a point where we don't have the money, then I have a concern. But when it's there, I don't have a concern. And so we're making, I think we're making a big deal out of this when we really don't have to, you know, so...
Because the money's not there.
If you have several positions that are open and there not being, no money's going out, that money is sitting there, okay? And that money can be used to be paid over here. Now, if you have several positions that are open and there's money sitting there, how come you do not have any money? The money is sitting there, and so that money's going to be used for this position. Now, that's okay. You're still not going outside of a budget. You're staying within your budget of what you said you're going to have for that fiscal year. So there's nothing wrong with that. And I don't know, we getting too far and too deep in this, and we really don't have to.
Treasurer Thompson?
Let me at least explain the document that you're looking at. So Ms. Carter asked me to put together a document, and I think this document will update this every month. So I think that'll help us really track actual dollars. So if you look at the funding codes, they're all there, and then this is, and what you're looking at under fund name, fund, and not, you see 93024, Munis Appropriations. That is your budget. And that's what the board approved in September. So this June, you will be asked to approve temporary appropriations, which means a temporary budget. And then you'll be asked by statute, this is statutory, that in September, you will be asked to approve the appropriations. So what I've done is I've taken all those, every single one of those accounts, and then to the right is expenditures as of 2/28/25, and then as of 2/28/25, any encumbrances, which means the money's not gone yet, but we've written a purchase order against it, but the vendor hasn't charged us, is basically what it means. But it's spent. And then you can see to the right, the percentage of used, how much of the percent of that budget have we actually used? Now, you know that we're spending more money than we're bringing in. We're in deficit spending. So in our 10-year plan, or excuse me, our $10 million cuts over the next five years calls for a reduction in force of 29 staff members. So regardless of how we shuffle the pie, whatever you, if anything's added, then something has to be added to the RIF list. So it's just a matter of where your priorities are. Does that make sense?
Mr. Harrison, then Dr. Molnar?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to respectfully disagree with my colleague, Member Alexander. When we are dealing with our own checkbooks, with our own home finances, we can do that. We can take what we didn't spend here and put it here. There's a reason why I asked for the titles. There's a reason why I ask why this position that was general fund, a 100% general fund is going to 50% Title I funding or 50% this fund. And while we're moving money around, it's a reason why I ask, because at a certain point, we're not going to get past riffing people. We're not going to get past that. And we can take pieces of the pie and we can chop it up and we can throw it in there and we can call it a salad, we can call it a chef salad, we can call it whatever we want to call it, okay? We have to stop spending money. We're spending more money than we're taking in, and we're going to get in trouble spending more money, and we're creating new positions that we have to now cut somewhere else. And for me, putting anyone at 10 North Main Street is the wrong answer. If we don't need to fill a position there, that means we had too many positions. And we clearly hear that we don't have enough positions in the classroom. So if I can ask a question about this Administrative Secretary Confidential, is that a bargaining position? Okay, so if that's not a bargaining position and we have to cut that position, does that person go back to a bargaining position?
They can.
Yeah, they will. It depends on the contract. I mean, yeah, they will be able to. I think they're within a certain amount of time.
Carter, you need to speak into the mic. Please, thank you.
I believe it depends on the time period, depending on when the position, so if you mean like if you cut it like next year or something?
No. Okay, if this position is riffed, does this person that we're going to move from, I'm assuming she's in a classified position now?
Mm-hmm. She's in a, yes, a union position.
So she's protected?
Yes.
Okay, so we're moving to an unprotected position, okay? So now if we have to riff, does this person go back to a protected position?
She will have the opportunity to go back, depending on the timing on which the position is cut. If not, she would have to apply to go back.
So we don't know?
She would have to apply to go back to a secretary position that's a classified position.
So then what would dictate if she's allowed to go back? If she applies, it has to be a position open?
It would have to be a position open. We are currently in need of secretary positions as well.
And I'll let this go. I think this is a risky, I think taking someone from a classified position, creating a new position when we know we have to make cuts. And those cuts are going to be deep, and they're going to be painful. So we're creating new positions. We created two last meeting. We filled a HC position last meeting, correct? I think it was $73,000. So we are filling positions, and we're saying we're not going to fill a position, but we don't know that those positions, as a board member, I don't know what exists and what doesn't exist. So if you come back to me three months from now and says, hey, here's a HC position that I need filled, I don't know if that's the position we're talking about. And it's not my job to know. My job is to make sure that we are not spending more than we're bringing in. And right now, we're spending more than we're bringing in.
Member Molnar?
Thank you, Madam President. And as I just heard you say, we have open positions. So I don't know why we're creating a new position for an individual when we have open positions. I understand some of them might be unsatisfied, but my questions are, my questions are for the Treasurer, and I will ask all three of them. And then first, are we in deficit spending? Second, do we need to cut or will we need to reduce 29 staff members? Second, do we need to cut, or do, will we need to reduce 29 staff members? And third, if we approve this new position, does that go up to need to reduce 30 staff members?
Yes, yes, and yes.
Yes, so if we approve this new position, then that is another person we're going to have to riff. So my last thing, this is a lovely document, I would love to go through it. I think a committee would be a great place to go through something like this, and I have a motion on the floor. Move this, motion was to move this item to committee.
Member Molnar did have a motion on the floor, then there was a question, then it was not a second, and her motion was to move this job description to either, do you want to decide a committee or leave it either or? You said either equity or legal?
Finance.
Finance, okay. To finance. So Member Molnar's motion is on the floor to move this job description to the Finance Committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Question. Mr. Alexander.
Oh, I want to say, it wasn't a job description, it's an actual person that's being recommended for a position. That would be moved to the Finance Committee. It's not a job description.
One second. So Member Molnar, repeat what your motion is. It's not a job description.
This is a new position, and I would like to know, because I'm being told that this new position is being funded from other positions that are not funded, and in theory, there might be money somewhere. I would like to know where that money is before I approve a new position. So Finance Committee, please show, I would like to move this item for the Finance Committee to demonstrate, or someone to demonstrate within the Finance Committee where the money's coming from to cover a new position.
Okay, that's the motion. Is there a second? Do you have another discussion?
I just have a quick question, if I could, for clarification. We're talking about which, I've lost my spot on the 15-3, thank you. That's all I have.
It says reclass, reclassification.
So I believe...
Madam President, may I just, may I just do a clarification? Okay, so if it moves to the Committee, it would be the position, it would not be the person.
Okay. I understand, we put the person on the next board, Doc.
It would not be the person, it would be the position, because, because we're not in a, we're not in a position of dealing with persons. This is not a slavery situation here. My goodness. This would be the position, and where you would bring the position, and I would suspect that there is a job description someplace, right? And you would bring that job description to the Committee to review with that classification, with the steps and all of that. That's what we would be, sort of, moving on to position.
All right, so the motion is on the floor to move this position, the Administrative Secretary, the reclassification position found at 15.3, to the Finance Committee. It's been moved by Member Molnar. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been second by Member Harrison. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing not, roll call, vote please. Dr. Thompson.
Ms. Hall.
I abstain.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
You still call my name.
Yes, you're right, you're right. I threw myself off when I said Hall, sorry.
It's fine, I'm still here.
Ms. Autry.
No.
Mr. Alexander.
No.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Dr. Molnar.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
No.
Reverend Harrison.
Yes.
That leaves us at 3-3, which is not enough to carry. Yeah. So the motion fails.
All right, so we're, that motion still is not going to... Yeah, Superintendent.
Section 17.
One second, just for clarification, because although the motion, the motion that was made from Member Molnar was to move it into a committee, you there, you never made, because discussion was had when you were discussing personnel, we had discussion, and as part of that discussion, Member Molnar, in her discussion, made a motion that did not carry. Now, you can still make a motion, even though if it didn't, if this motion didn't carry, you can still make a motion for this, it will go for a vote, it will, I mean, if I'm looking at here, she, it won't pass, but you still can finish the business, and then you may have to re-bring it, or before you re-bring it, to Member Molnar's point, that information could be made available. Because we were just moving on, so... For, to accept the, to accept the personnel recommendations. Okay. But that point, do you, so 15.3, okay. Do you guys understand what I'm saying? When we get to that point, yes, okay, so we'll move forward. I just wanted to clarify.
There's nothing in section 20, and then section 21, I would be recommending... What number was that? 15.3. So I would be recommending all Personnel Matters with the exclusion of section 15.3, which that would be excluded. And so I do want to say, Madam President, to the Board, that hopefully the employee does not resign, but if so, then we would have to fill that position, because it's a very significant amount of work that has to go into a lot of the things that we do internally.
Resign from what, Madam President, resign from what, Mr. Superintendent? The person, she has not been offered the job.
I'm referring to the other employee.
Mr. Alexander.
Yeah, isn't 15-3 still on for the vote? It stays on because it was voted on and didn't pass? Is that correct, and am I wrong?
15-3 was voted to be moved, so yes, it still would...
It remains on the personnel...
Yes, but he was making a recommendation to remove it, but it could stay on.
Are you making a recommendation to move it?
So I'm just recommending the personnel, I'm going to correct that. I'm making the recommendation to present the categories 10 through 20.
Okay, the Superintendent has moved to accept, made a motion to accept the personnel in sections 10 through 20. Is there a second? He made the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Mr. Alexander's made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
It's been second by Ms. Autry. Is there any discussion?
Madam President, can I make a correction, please?
Yes.
Thank you. The recommendation stays the same, but I'm removing 10 point, 15.3.
That's fine. So the motion, the amended motion that's on the floor, was moved by, motion by Mr. Alexander, motion is to accept all the personnel recommendations as given by the Superintendent, with the exception of 15.3. It's been, it's been moved, seconded by Ms. Autry. Any further discussion? Ms. Autry.
Thank you. I just wanted to quickly acknowledge in item 10.1, the retirement of Sheila Gavirro. I just wanted to wish her well and congratulations. She, I know was Building Teacher of the Year at Bookdol some time ago. I know she's worked in other capacities as well, but she was also the President of the Akron Council of PTAs for many years, and was a great mentor to me. So I just wanted to acknowledge Sheila Gavirro and her retirement, and congratulations.
Thank you. Seeing, hearing not, a roll call, please. Yes, Vice President Alexander.
I also wanted to say, congratulations to Coach Mitchell, who was over at Firestone, football coach, who is retiring from Akron Public Schools. He served the district for a number of years. He did good over there, he served our students, he made sure the students were first, and so we want to wish him well in his retirement, and hopefully he enjoys his, his time away from public service for a moment. Thank you.
All right, no problem, thank you. Member Harrison.
I didn't realize that Eric Mitchell was on the agenda, so I want to just give him a shout out, Eric Mitchell, Garfield, class of 85, running back for the first state championship, or we lost the state championship that year, Cincinnati-Princeton, 10-7. But just want to give Eric a shout out, childhood friend, and when you say about the students, Eric took a program that nobody really wanted to work in or for, and Eric built that. He came from Brush High School to Akron, back home to Akron. So Coach Mitchell, just a great all-around guy, worked to send a lot of kids to college, and not just star kids, but average kids. It's somewhere for everyone to go, and Coach Mitchell found that place for them, whether it was in football, track, or just coaching men. So just want to say, congratulations to Eric Mitchell, Lillian and his family, grand pride, 85.
All right, thank you. Reverend Harrison. All right, seeing no further discussion, a roll call, vote please. Dr. Thompson.
Reverend Harrison.
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Dr. Molnar.
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
And Ms. Hall.
So yes to all, except for 15.3?
Because 15.3 is not there. Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. Next, we'll have the Board Letters and Resolutions, Board Letters and Resolutions and motions in the consent agenda.
Thank you, President Jackson. I wish to recommend the approval of the resolutions and motions presented in category 25. They're in proper format, and I'm moving for their approval, please. Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? So move. It's been moved by Member Sykes, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Alexander. Any discussions? Seeing, hearing not, roll call, vote please. Dr. Thompson.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Dr. Molnar.
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
This is the part that gets confusing. We stopped at 20, we voted from 10 to 20, right?
Correct.
And now we're on 26?
The motion was made to approve the personnel recommendations, and that's 21.
So we're on 21?
Yeah, well, we, it was a motion to approve the personnel, and we all went with 15.3 being removed.
Right, we said, the Superintendent said make a motion to approve 10 through 20.
I'll think.
And that's what we voted on.
Okay, understood. So now we're at 21.1, approval of personnel recommendations. We did that, that's what I...
Yeah, so we're on 26.1, a possible motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, so then that's, that's what I remember Hall, when, say the full number, like if we're voting 10 through 25, let's say 10 through 25, if we're, this is a work session, right? And we're going over all of this, we need to say 10 through 25, not 10 through 20.
Correct.
Because if we're saying 10 through 20, then that means all the 20's been, right?
Right.
So I guess, because I need to abstain then from 23.2, if that's the case.
23.2?
23.2 and 25.3.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Reverend Harrison.
Yeah, I was under the same impression as Member Hall. I was going 10 through 20 Personnel Recommendations, and I had a question about 22.1, Board Letter, Legal Contracts, and Board Policy. And so we went down to the consent agenda. Are we going to cover 22?
I'm listening.
No, no, I'm just, go ahead.
Yes, the committee at the whole, is what you're saying, for me. Yeah, if he has, if you have a question, we can discuss those items. No, one second, okay, so I want to recognize Mr. Harrison and Member Hall for their questions, because we had moved on in the agenda, thinking that there were no discussions. And so now, a point of correction is that we stopped at 20. Mr. Harrison has some questions about one, one of the items, and Member Hall needs to abstain from one of the items, 23.5?
23.2, 25.3.
Okay, so, and then, Mr. Alexander, what was your question?
Yeah, I'm saying, did we get to 22.1 and 22.2? I think we skipped, did we skip over those?
That's what we're discussing now, yeah. So that's what we're, that's where the point of correction, we're at now.
I think our motion was from, for 23, right, wasn't it? Item 23, which is in the Board Letters, and is that correct?
Right, but it wasn't, it didn't, so since that wasn't, the amendment would have to be made to that motion, once we correct what we're doing now.
Okay.
You understand, because we moved on, once we approved the Personnel Recommendations through 10-20.
Right.
Now we're at 21.1.
We should be 22. We went to 23, we made a motion to move forward 23, and we didn't do 22, so if we can go ahead, probably can go ahead and do, vote on 23, and then go back to 22 and vote. I have a discussion.
22, oh, yeah, Board, Board Policy Development.
Yes, wait a minute, yes. Because we didn't, we didn't do 22.
Board, I'm sorry, Board Letter and Legal Contracts.
Right, we didn't do 22. We went straight to 23.
Oh, yeah, I'll have it on here. Okay.
So I think we can vote on 23 now, and then go back and do 22, if I'm correct. Is that right, Mr.?
If we take it out of the consent agenda, so what, what has been passed is everything through 20.
Right.
And then, now we need to, the next motion is everything from 22 on.
Correct.
So those would have not been voted on.
Yeah, well, we have a motion on the floor for the consent agenda.
Right.
Okay. And so the consent agenda, as I'm looking at it, starts at 25?
The motion I put on forward was for Board Letters and Resolutions and motions in the consent agenda. That was the motion.
Okay, so we went all the way down, okay.
So, yeah, so my motion was for Board Letters and Resolutions and motions in the consent agenda.
22, okay. Okay.
Okay.
And so, next is the board letters and consent agenda, Dr. Robinson. How we did all that talking to it should be voted on, cause he's gonna talk about that, and then we'll move to approve of the resolution and motion.
Madam President.
Yes.
I, I think what might be a little bit confusing, thank you, Madam President, is that the board letters are all culminated in the consent agenda. So, that means items 22 through 25.6 are all the same. So, the board letters are actually summed up as a consent agenda.
Right.
So.
So, the President was correct. When she asked for the consent agenda, and we did the consent agenda.
I thought this was the cow, so it's giving people the opportunity to go item by item. So, that's what was skipped is.
All right. Yes, see, because this, we were doing, talking, it's that list, so, to get to the business. So, you, you just need to make sure, Member Hall, when I say you, that you, that your abstentions are recorded, which is, Member Harrison, did you record what Ms. Hall, Member Hall stated? Since we didn't go by each one, that's what she wanted to recognize with her vote.
So, what are we doing on these first meetings? I thought it was a cow where we were going over each section. And then, the last meeting was just going over the business that, voting. But we start off going through, like the superintendent, he said 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11. And then, we go here from 20, and then we jump all the way to 25.6.
I'm sorry?
But it's, it's fine if that's how we're gonna do it, but I just want to be consistent.
No, I think we, I agree.
One way, and then we switch.
No, I think I agree. I, I agree with consistency. I don't think you're wrong for that. But, Member Harrison, well.
Well, I think Member Alexander, I, I, I wanted to pull 22.1 out of the consent agenda. I want to discuss that. So, I think Member Alexander's going to take care of that with his.
Okay.
Yes. Madam President, I'm gonna rescind my motion for those, and then we can get a chance to go through 22, and we go do the cow, then we can, can go to the vote.
All right. Okay. Um, the, Member Alexander has rescinded the motion. And now, we are discussion, Superintendent, so we're at 20, you have a question for 22.1? I mean, to remove Mr. Harrison, please.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I do have a question and a concern for 22.1. I know we had approved last meeting for.
Oh, Member Harrison, I partner interruption. So, Mr. Alexander has motion that we remove 20.
Yeah, I rescinded my motion.
To rescind this motion, and then, but then you made a motion to remove 20, the, what is it, 20, 21.1 from the consent agenda, right?
No, no. Pastor Harrison had some questions on that. So, I, I removed my, my motion, so it takes it away. Now, we're going back to 22.1.
Which is part of the, it's in the consent agenda.
Right.
And we don't, to discuss it, don't we remove it from, for, to enter in discussion, has to be removed from the consent agenda because we just approved the consent. Cow, oh, okay. Go ahead. Ruth says the cow just talked. Let's go.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, 22.1, I know we, well, let me lay some foundation for this. You know, this is dealing with the schools, the building of Pfeiffer, Miller, South. And, and I've continuously had questions about, do we have enough money to build and to tear down the schools? So, we, we approved different things. Now, we're at a, a point of approving the CMR. My concern is that we got two documents. I asked Ruth, because the documents were inadvertently not attached. But one of the contracts is 47, or 43 pages, and one of them is 27 pages. And I guess this question overall is about the building project in general. We have not seen anything that says how much money we have. We have not seen anything that says how much we are paying architects, CMRs. We have not seen anything. And so, now, we're at this point, and I see the contracts. So, one of my questions would be, how much money do we have to complete this project? And when I say complete the project, I mean tearing down the buildings and building the one building.
I'm sorry, for if we have the money or not, that would be a question more appropriately answered by Dr. Thompson. But as for the cost of the contracts, the architectural contract number, the cost of it, was voted on and approved last spring.
Okay.
I don't have the contract in front of me for the exact dollar amount, and the CMR contract cost is part of the contract that is atta, now attached to.
Okay. I didn't see the cost in here.
Okay. It, it is supposed to be in there for what they.
Yeah. So, the cost is not in here. But Madam President, can I address the treasurer?
Yes, Member Harrison. Thank you.
For this particular project, how much money do we have on hand for this project, this building?
The total budget, now, this is a three-year-old budget projection, was $63 million for the total build and demo, and demo. So, we have the COPS money, which is earning interest. So, we, remember, that's the $40 million that we took out on a loan, a low-interest loan. At this point, and, and we've begun to make payments on, on that money, that's 40 million, probably end up being more like 42 million or so, maybe a little more with interest.
Mr., Mr. Treasurer, can I just ask, how much money do we have on hand?
We have $55 million for this project on hand. The balance of 8 million to get to 63 was, at the time we made the, made the COPS deal, we were under the understanding that we were gonna split the 004
Right.
LFI money with the city. Well, that's still in a holding pattern to, to best of my knowledge. So, what we actually have on hand is $55 million.
And, and you reported out that construction cost is rising.
About 16% a year. And now, maybe it's starting to slow down. I, you might know a little bit better.
It is not slowing down.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
Not slowing down. Okay. So, so, here is my concern, and it's a concern of a lot of people who have lived around school buildings, who are still living around school buildings that have not been torn down.
Right.
Okay. So, we have $55 million, and we have to, we have to tear down three buildings and build one. And that's the best-case scenario, $55 million.
Well, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So, yeah. Then, you, you start tearing something down, you, you don't know what you're gonna find under what was built. So, you know, I, yeah. So, my concern is, we get 80% of this done, and we don't have any money. Where does the 20% come from?
We would have two possible funding, well, three possible funding sources. You could pass a bond issue, if you could pass it. You take out another COPS issuance, which we could, with a payment, or it's general fund. Those are your three funding options.
So, and, and this is not a question to be answered today, but this is certainly a question I presented before, and I had asked that we be given some updates, and I was told that it was all being done in an internal committee. And that, at, at the end of the day, this board is responsible for finances and policy in this district, period. A, at the end of the day, that's what we're responsible for. And for me, I can't stick my head in the sand and act like we're not in a financial crisis with this build. We are in a financial crisis with this Miller-South build. We do have enough money to build North because we passed the bond issue. But, and, and this is not a, a reflection of your leadership, Mr. Superintendent, because these things were in place before you got here. But we are here, as you would say, and we don't have enough money to build these buil, this building. $55 million to tear three buildings down and to build one.
The, the same situation could potentially occur at North as well, because that bond issue is, has a cap also.
Absolutely.
So, the longer it takes to get to demo, move the dirt, start finding out what your soils are like, you'll hear the word unsuitable soils all day, every day, which means a change order. I mean, I, I've never done a construction project that doesn't. So, so, now, we have a contingency fund, that, that's built into a contingency fund. But the, the, we, what's paramount is to get on these projects moving as quickly as possible because every day, every day we wait is cha-ching, cha-ching on the construction cost.
Madam President, Mr. Superintendent, this is one of the things that, you know, you and I have talked about. Well, I've shared my concerns with you early on. The North project, absolutely, we need to jump on it because we have a, a locked-in number that we have for that. But again, we're at this place here where we're spending money today that we may need at the end, out of general fund. And so, when we're adding positions today, that impacts tomorrow. $55 million to build a school. I, I mean, that's, that's just a razor-thin margin. And I, I think we're going to be in the general fund at the end of this. And I think we have to be honest and upfront with that. But I would ask that this internal committee, whatever this internal committee is, it needs to bring the finances to the board. When, when something comes up, because we're approving a raise, a step raise for $800, but we're not approving, we're not seeing the numbers to 10 or 15 million dollars, we have to see these numbers, and we have to talk about these numbers, and we have to be transparent with the public about these numbers. Because $55 million is, is, is going to be razor-thin, and that is again, and I'll sit down, why I believe that that $17.5 million should be in community learning centers, period.
Yes, Superintendent, then, oh, the Member, Member Molinar.
So, Pastor Harrison, the money that, the LFI money, which is what you're referring to, that meeting, I think we finally were able to secure a meeting. There are some discussions that are gonna have to happen legally, and one of those discussions will have to be because the money that is there was used for the building of, of CLCs. And so, at this point, we will have to have legal, which, we had some previous legal discussion around who really owns, who really has the money. Is it ours solely? Is it partially the city? Those are questions that we will hopefully be able to answer once that meeting takes place and our attorneys begin to really have discussion on both sides around what do next steps yield? Does it, does it mean that the money that's there is the school system's? Or do we have to go back to the taxpayers and ask them, since this was done some years ago, in terms of, can we use that money for the building of, of these two buildings and/or as well as North? When I came in, the, I was told that there was 16 million. Eight was supposed to be used for Pfeiffer-Miller-South, and the other eight was being asked, could we use it for North? And so, that's the level, area that I've been working in since I've, since I arrived. And so, hopefully, this meeting that we're having with the city, which is our Joint Board of Review, I think that's what it's called, we will hopefully leave that meeting, my goal is to leave the meeting knowing exactly when we walk out of there, who does the money belong to, and what is the next step in terms of us moving? Because that money was accounted for, for the building of these two buildings, the 8 million portion of it.
Thank you. And I do have a message to follow up with the city, just to solidify that, the agenda and align with what's been understood that these monies can be designated for. Member Molinar.
Thank you, Madam President. I do think that this is important information. This is an important conversation. This is important to know as board members. I don't want to hear it at a board meeting. I don't think this is the appropriate time or place to have this conversation. I think that a lot of districts, I know that a lot of districts, when they do something important, like a building project, they have a committee for a building project. And we're not building one building. We're building three buildings. I hear there might be an internal committee. I don't know if any board members are involved in that committee. I know I haven't been invited to any of those committee meetings. I think this would be an appropriate time to have an ad hoc committee, because ad hoc committees study very explicit problems within a specific timeframe when the need arises. So, I would like to move that the board establish an ad hoc committee, as permitted by policy, to focus on matters related to the three buildings, Miller-South, Pfeiffer, and North. And this committee will receive all of the relevant information, planning, construction progress, until the new buildings are fully operational and students are attending regular classes. So, that would be the defined scope and timeframe, providing updates and recommendations to the full board. So, that way, we don't have to have, there, there are multiple, there's financial, there's legal, there are lots of things, and we don't have to use board meeting time to learn about decisions we have to make as board members related to the buildings.
Uh, yes. Dr. Thompson.
Typically, so, on, on the agenda tonight's the CMR, the Construction Manager at Risk. So, typically, what happens is the architectural firm will lead meetings that include the board and design. Then, the CMR, there'll be weekly meetings, sometimes daily meetings, that Steve will be attending. Then, there's usually a meeting that the superintendent and you, three board members would serve on that and have monthly meetings with the CMR. And the CMR is the one that runs the, you know, they're, they're the GC. They run the whole thing, and that's typically what I, at least what I've seen in my experience, leading up to that.
Yes. But that's not for all three. And so, what the committee would do is the committee would have a once-a-month meeting, like the other committees, where we just keep track of the three buildings and the progress on the three buildings, and bring the necessary information on the progress of those three buildings to the full board.
Member Molinar, Dr. Molinar, she says made a motion to, that we add a ad hoc committee for the purpose of discussing the building of projects, the three building of projects within the district. Is there a second?
I, I didn't think we needed a motion for an ad hoc, but i, if, if we're entertaining it that way.
To create a committee. She wants to create an ad hoc committee. And so, we had the, as I understood, we would have to, it would be a motion to add this, because it's a committee, even though it's ad hoc.
So, you don't, you don't have to have a motion. I just made one. You, you as President could just say we're having a committee.
That's what they said. Okay. All right. All right.
I'm sorry, Madam President.
Yes.
They're gonna have a committee anyhow, so that part, that committee that they're gonna have could be part of the board, like Steve said, Dr.
Thompson.
Thompson.
Okay, yeah.
See, it's getting late, you know what happened, my brain's cut off.
So I won't appoint an ad hoc committee at this time, we can revisit it after, based off of the information of the treasurer with the CMR, the person that's being employed. And I think that, Member Monar, does make a good point as far as the communication. And so however you work that out, as Dr. Thompson said, three board members or whoever was selected to be on that committee, I think that would be fine. Thank you to my board colleagues for assisting with that. Member Monar?
Can, I, I wanna just throw out there, if that is the route that we go, then only those board members could be involved. If we had an ad hoc committee, it would operate like the rest of our committees, where on important days that more than three board members would like to come and attend, then the, the full, like the Equity Committee, the full, full board could sit and attend. We cannot do that if we follow this route. Also, a reminder that we have different CMRs, and so the, it would be, this would be a combination of what's happening across.
No.
It's only one CMR?
I'm sorry, a point of clarification, the CMR in question now is strictly for the Miller South, Pfeiffer build. North will be a completely separate project with completely and entirely different parties involved, unless it's the same firm is determined to be the highest-ranked, most-qualified firm for whichever point we are on in that project. So we, we can have the CMR committee for the Miller South, Pfeiffer project, which we will, and we could bring other updates outside of the Miller South project and include North, but it would not have the parties involved in the North project involved in that.
Exactly. So they would not be involved. So what the board committee, what the ad hoc board committee would do is it would be the one place that the board would receive this information, and sometimes the Miller South people might come, sometimes the North people come, maybe sometimes we have Miller South and North, but the board committee would keep track of the high-level information of the progress and the timeline of the three building projects, because the other committees are meeting in silos, and more frequently in silos as needed. But the board committee would be operating differently, and this way, the full board could attend if needed.
Okay, as I said, I think, I'll think on that, because we, you presented legal, we can have presentations that, legal contracts and board policy over the various builds. You presented in that form, but I think to, okay, let me, I need to process this, because to Monar's point, they get lengthy. So I think, at this time, I'm not gonna appoint any committee, because I want to be clear on exactly what I'm, what I am doing when I do it. So not that I believe that is not necessary, but I just want to be clear, I don't want to just say, yeah, I'm gonna do an ad hoc committee for this. So with more clarification on what it is we desire and what, what is going to be the outcome, so I'll revisit that at a later time.
Of course, happy to do so, whichever direction is decided to go.
Thank you so much, thank you both. Member Hall, then we're gonna call.
Just a quick question, will Kenmore, the new Kenmore, or Miller South and Pfeiffer and North High School, will they be considered CLCs?
Right now, we don't know that. That depends on what happens in this Joint Board of Review, because that money was CLCs that you built years ago.
They would have to be CLCs if you use this money through the cooperative agreement.
We don't know that, we don't know that yet. So I don't want to sit here and say yes or no. Once we've had that Joint Board of Review meeting, and our attorneys have discussed that, because that question, it's a good question, I've, I've asked the same question myself, but I don't know just yet, until we have that meeting.
Okay.
And the attorneys will tell us what direction we actually need to go.
Okay, so we need to kind of stop talking about that money, then going to these schools, because if we don't know if it's gonna be a CLC, you can't use that money for something that's not a CLC.
We don't know.
What's in the cooperative agreement?
We don't, we don't know.
It states it has to be a CLC. So that's all I'm saying.
But we don't know about that particular part of it right now.
Right, okay.
We may could use it and it's not, doesn't have to be a CLC, we don't know.
No, yeah. That's what she's saying, it's in a cooperative agreement that it has to be a CLC. That's, that's one of the things when I meet with, about the agenda for the JBR that they want to discuss, so that we're clear, based off the cooperative agreement, that the agenda is following that flow. All right, yes, uh, this, we're on twenty-six-point-one, we're set on twenty-six-point-one, so Ms. Autry, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that the Joint Board of Review meeting is Friday, April the fourth, at ten AM. Friday, April the fourth, at ten AM is the Joint Board of Review.
All right, thank you both. All right, now I'm, I'm ready to read. Now we want approval of the resolutions and motions in the consent agenda.
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Alexander, is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Ms. Autry, any discussion? We didn't have plenty of discussion. Okay, hearing none, roll all vote, please.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Monar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall, still need twenty-three-point-two and twenty-five-point-three abstentions?
No, well, twenty-three-point-two and twenty-three-point-five.
Twenty-three-point-five, got it.
Abstaining, yes to everything else.
Got it. Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Motion carries six-zero on all things, and it carries our six-zero with one abstention, and the abstention being twenty-three-point-two and twenty-three-point-five, seven-oh on the balance.
Twenty-three-point-two.
Twenty-three-point-two.
And twenty-three-point-five.
And twenty-three-point-five, yes, yes ma'am. Did I read it wrong?
Thank you. Next, we will have the Business Affairs Recommendation, Dr. Robinson.
Are there any questions on the Business Affairs?
Member Hall, you've been recognized.
I had a quick question regarding the Business Affairs, which is twenty-seven-point-two, with the stadium bleacher, like the bleachers, Buckto, Ellet, Kenmore. And I see that Buckto has general fund of nine-thousand-eight-hundred-ninety dollars and forty-seven cents. Will this also go and coincide with the concession stand and the press office being redone? Because I know the bleachers are connected to it.
No, these are the repairs that are needed to the bleachers that were found when they were reviewed for maintenance. This is strictly the repairs. You, earlier last month, provided the repair funds for the inside bleachers. These are the outside bleachers.
Right, I understand that, that's why I'm saying, if we're getting a new concession stand, new box office, and we have bleachers that's connected.
But they're not actually connected the way.
They're not, okay.
They may not be. This is maintenance to keep them up and going, because you just approved us to go into, in the consent agenda, to start negotiating with a design firm for the press.
Right, I understand that, I'm just, I'm just, I was just saying out loud, if we're spending this kind of money, to me, going to a school, it looks like the bleachers are connected to all of that stuff, so I'm asking the question, if we're spending nine-thousand dollars to repair, and then we're getting a whole new system, but it's not that.
They're not new bleachers.
Okay, thank you.
No, these, our bleachers actually are new, they're only four years old.
Okay.
So this is the maintenance on those.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. You okay?
Yeah. I'll ask you later.
Superintendent, no other questions, Superintendent?
Any other questions? President Jackson, I'm reached to recommend the approval of the Business Affairs Recommendations presented in category twenty-seven.
Is there a motion to approve the Business Affairs Recommendation, category twenty-seven?
I move to move the Business Affairs Recommendations, to approve the Business Affairs Recommendations.
It's been moved by Member Autry, properly seconded by Mr. Harrison. Any discussion? Yes, go ahead.
Just one more quick thing on twenty-seven-point-five, with the roofing solutions. So Pfeiffer is going to be torn down once we build the new Kenmore. Are these just, like, patches being made, or what is, what's going on?
Yes.
Because we're tearing the school down.
This is to provide preventative maintenance and repairs for the existing time that the building is open.
Okay, okay. And then Stewart, since we're reopening Stewart, all they need is nineteen-hundred dollars for repairs for their roof?
Yes, the cost is based on whether the roof is currently under warranty, and the age of the roof, as well as the square footage of the roof. The overall profile of Stewart is fairly small in terms of square footage for the roofing area. That's why the cost is so low for that specific school.
Okay, thank you.
All right, roll call, please.
Dr. Monar?
Abstaining on twenty-seven-fifteen, yes on the balance.
Twenty-seven-thirteen, I'm sorry.
Fifteen, twenty-seven-fifteen, the last one.
Thank you. Mrs. Sykes? Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Motion carries six-oh with one abstention on everything except twenty-seven-point-one-five-seven-oh on the balance.
Okay, so now I'm at twenty-eight-point-one. Is there any unfinished business? Okay, seeing any hearing none. Tax complaints for tax year 2024. Is there a motion to approve the seven-year tax complaints for the tax year 2024?
Hello?
It's been moved by Member Sykes, is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Member Harrison, any discussion? Yes, I'm sorry, you questioned Vice President Alexander.
So this section here, this is money that is owed to us? I, I wrote that down as a question.
Yeah, there, there, there are challenges to what is owed to us.
Got you, got you, okay.
They're challenging their tax bill.
So they're challenging the tax bill, okay, got you, okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, no further discussion, roll call, please.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Monar?
Yes.
Motion carries seven-oh.
All right. Is there, there's no new business currently, but there is a need to go into executive session pursuant to Ohio Revise Code 12122G1, to consider the employment or discipline of a public employee and/or officials pursuant to Ohio Revise Code 121.22G3, to conference with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are the subject of pending or immediate or imminent, excuse me, court action. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
It's been moved by Member Alexander, is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Member Autry, any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, roll call vote, please, Dr. Thompson.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Monar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
No.
Motion carries six-one. Recession at nine-fifty.
We stand in recess at nine-fifty for executive session. We stand in recess at 9:50 for executive session.
Standing back in session at 10:46 from our executive session. There is no action being taken from our executive session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, it's been moved by Mr. Alexander, probably second by Ms. Hall. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Motion carries 7:00.
We stand adjourned at 10:47 PM.